Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this League City Council Budget Meeting. I have apologies from councillors Wilson and Coward. And I think in the event of that, we just want to mention in that regard that councillor Coward has asked some points she wished to make to be presented by council. We'll get to that, so that will come up through the meeting. Confirmation of the agenda. I move that the apologies be accepted, seeing that councillor Noonan was prepared to say aye or against. Confirmation of the agenda, I move for the Chair of the Agenda as published be confirmed, with the exception that the report in section, I'm writing six, section two business information and audacious budget reallocation, that report has been removed. The budget discussion will still continue, the report has been removed and will come back to council later date, and the Chief Executive will speak to that at appropriate time in this meeting. So I'll move that with that exception the agenda as published be confirmed, seeing that councillor Staines will make it plain to say aye or against. Okay, I'm now just going to give a, the Chief Executive and I are just going to give a bit of an overview as a context for this meeting. The draft budget for the annual plan obviously has to be consistent with our LTP, as expressed by the council directives to the city of staff over time. And in the case of the first budget for Triennam, in the first instance, this direct, if you like, necessarily came from the previous council, because that's when the process starts. The context for that in broad terms goes back to 2011, when council faced some considerable projected rate rises of 11.9, 7.6 and 5.4 over three years. And council adopted a financial strategy in 2012 to deal with that and set limits on rates and debt. And you'll see here that in previous years, the rates, we set a rates limit for three consecutive years of five, four and three percent increases, and then three percent thereafter. So in the 2012-13 year, the predicted increase had been 11.9, we set a level of five, where she eventually came to 4.9. And the savings illustrated up there, $12 million worth of savings altogether. The, in this financial year, we've reached the year when we set a limit of three percent. The projected rate increase prior to this was 5.4, so that left a gap and savings of 2.4 percent to be found. In the event, as the Chief Executive will explain, the current draft estimates in our folders are for 2.5 percent increase. So that gives us headroom of about 0.6 million under what we require of the previous.
Quickly run through how budget looks. The capital expenditure, there's a little change to it. There are no increases seemingly over what's been in the long-term plan. There is one decrease in extra income by solids, which we'll talk about a bit later. The operational budgets, just the starting point for reviewing the capital expenditure was that we shouldn't deviate from that 10-year LTP plan. You'll remember, three years ago, we began the process when we took out all of the discretionary capex. And this is the third year of that, where that discretionary capex is still out. Some of it starts to come in at the beginning of the long-term plan, and you've got some decisions to make about the claiming for some of that capex. And where you are still looking to put that in next year's long-term plan. Transport and tools capex was reviewed in the intensive detail, but it's been taken into account as part of the capital expenditure angle. And there isn't what you call discretionary capex, and so it's probably been considered intensively. As we have the operational budgets, in just like last year and the year before, this sort of just, you can reach the budget process where your staff put up the bits and we put them through to you. Again, because we had savings to come out through consecutive years of taking money out of some budgets. So the managers need to go through, we look line by line, look at the budgets. And the management managers were very proactive at finding areas of savings and working out how to absorb the inflation increases. We'll start, we've given instruction records of a me zero percent rates increases in the areas apart from areas where that was unable to be achieved. External contracts, things that we could, which we've known control over, but in the control of areas of steam there without any point of zero seen increases. In terms of the operating expenditure, so the raw, given savings wherever they could, inflation was a sad inflation to absorb. They would look to do this again, like the previous two years, with no minimal changes to service levels. So that's the instruction, is to where seek savings, operational expenditure. They were to actively advance to manage their expenditure in order to contain cost increases. And we've continued a process of actively re-doing staff vacancies to constrain what had been previously rising staff costs. In terms of where we are now, as we should see, there's a financial strategy set to rate the ones producing. We were initially predicting 5.5 and 5.4 for this year, and we came to today with two and a half percent difference, $633,000. Between what we've given you today and your upper limits on your rates increase is headroom, if you like. The previous policy position of savings, or the call for those who would pay off debt more quickly. But we haven't done that as long as you paid off, you summed it to do some things that you wanted to do in addition, or more than the long-term plan. And you summed it to pay off debt, so that's the decision you did that, or either the decision you did that. In terms of how the debt is looking, what you see up there is we anticipated new debt for the coming year is about $6 million, a little over $6 million. For this coming year, 14, 15, in the document you've put in front of you, we will be paying off 12, over $12 million of the debt. So we will have a neat reduction of about $6 million in the council's debt level. In 15, 16, it's nine, 16, 17, it's eleven, and it's an escalating process. Just a boost time for perhaps a dozen years, that this council would have paid off more debt to take on. Actually, we think we will start that process only just this year. But next year is the first year where it feels like we're in a kind of keel water in that stream. It's still a really long process though, and at this point, we're saying we will reach our, what the previous council determined in the financial strategy is the debt of 200 million. We're saying we will reach it by 2021, and then only if we continue to constrain spending. With regards to the council-controlled organisations, as you know, the Taj Mahal museums have known inflation adjustment or any other increase for the last three years. It has bitten them, but part of that has been in response to finding it very difficult to get good information of the museum about the budgetary needs. That position subsequently changed with firm commitment from the board to be transparent. They're in the middle of doing a strategic plan, they're reopening about these staffing changes, and we're working really hard with us around looking at areas of shared services and things that we can do more cost effectively. They've answered an inflation level up increase, and so the budget you've got in front of you contains an increase of two percent for them. Similarly, for tourism dealing, a three percent increase that they have requested, we get to discuss those. Tourism dealing hasn't been increased for four years in the Taj Mahal museum for three. The stadium, I've got some more direct comments to make on the stadium a little later. The budget that's in here is exactly the same as that set out in the annual plan. Summary of that budget from two, three, three, when we get to that in the agenda, I'll talk further about the stadium. So without the capital expenditure, I want to keep talking, but I might seem to be taking a little sun down. So the capital expenditure, as you can see, the level of new capital expenditure is a small proportion of the capital expenditure that have come in here. That is a dramatic change for this council. The capital expenditure around that $50 million level is about half the way we used to run. So that is a direct result of that process we went through for taking out the discretionary capex. We say discretionary capex, a lot of the times we have to have the expenditure on what you might call social infrastructure. We've had a large build decade, few years, like with the stadium, with the town hall, the Leesie, with 22 regent, we also spent hours on Tahuna. But with all of those things being all complete, the capital spend is pretty much halved. And that continues through into the LTP, it stays a much lower expenditure level. So let's just restate the view, this slide with our ears looking a bit further ahead. As you'll see there, there are still savings that will need to be made, this was made 14, 15. There are still some savings that need to be made for 15, 16. The inflation adjustment is still below that financial strategy level of three. The uninflated budgets though now are coming in under that three percent level, which does make the job somewhat easier, if you like. Although in some ways it's not that easy, there was definitely a bit of the system before, and it's hard to find a lot now. And then in 16, 17, as you'll see, our inflation-adjusted budgets are well on target to be in line with your financial strategy targets next month, three percent. In terms of the medium-term position, we, in summary, we need to continue to generate savings. We need to continue to find more efficient ways of doing things, we need to continue to look at options for shared services. You need to continue to make decisions about things that you no longer want to prioritise, or that the rate payers tell you they no longer want to prioritise. The things that they would prioritise instead. And so though that efficiency will be ongoing, a lot of it we just do in-house. Some of it where it requires a capital investment in order to make savings down the track, with fairly quick repayment theory will come to you with these, what we've called in the past, invest-to-save options. But we've got very few of these large projects we need to complete. And I guess the overall message is that although you've got some headroom today, our levels of debt for us and right across the council theme remains high. It does continue for a significant constraint on all your expenditure, unless there's things you decide to stop doing.
So as the Chief Executive mentioned, the council has options, clearly we have options with what has been presented to us in terms of the proposed budget. But we also have options around the $600,000 that has been offered up as a headroom. And the council can choose to use all or some of that differential. We can use it on strategic priorities. Last budget, we put some money into a couple of invest-to-save projects, which actually returned us considerably more than paying down debt would have. In one case, I think it was up to 30 percent on our investment. So that's definitely those sorts of things, although in this instance, we only have one or half of them. But those sorts of things were obviously very attractive, because we get a very good return for our investment. Clearly, as the Chief Executive has mentioned, it's a council policy still that any savings of the first quarter call is paid out in debt. And I guess the third option is that we can do nothing with that and have a 2.5 percent overall rate increase. The financial strategy, as I mentioned earlier, limits our rate increase hereafter, from this year on, to three percent. Debt limits, as the Chief Executive has mentioned, are a pressing issue still. And the imperative, it seems to me, to reduce debt is not so much about shifting the responsibility for it from one generation to another under generational equity. It's simply a matter of getting the money off our back as quickly as we can and give ourselves some headroom. The debt is not only too high for this city and the great pass, it also presents a risk going out if anything should change in the financial market. And I guess the third factor is the standard and pause factor. They have made it very clear in taking this off negative watch, that they do so because they have confidence that this council will continue to be as disciplined as it says it will, as the previous one said it would and was. Clearly, if we depart from that discipline, they will take another look at us. And I think it's fair to say that it's not only standard and pause that expects this council to retain discipline in this area community as well. So the decision-making context is, the first, there's two parts to it, I guess, the purpose of a local government under the recent legislation and our own strategic framework. In the first instance, the purpose of local government is up there. This came up in a discussion yesterday, and it is widely acknowledged throughout local government and even in central government, that there is not necessarily consensus on what this actually means, because it's a lot bigger than the previous purpose. But nonetheless, that is the purpose of local government that we work within. And secondly, we work within our own strategic framework. And over the last few years, council has developed a number of future-focused strategies in consultation with the community. And they are a context that our budgetary decisions need to be made in. And I guess the other point I'd make about those is that they are interdependent, in the sense that, for instance, the financial strategy that is now required of us by statute, and the infrastructure plan that is required of us by statute, impact on, for instance, the development of the spatial bank and district bank, because they have financial implications going forward in terms of investment and renewals. They're all interlocked, and we need to keep those in mind in making our budgetary decisions.
Just a couple more slides, so if you go through the reports that are on the agenda for today, you'll see that this, there's some information, there's a report on the guest room museum update. So during the 13, 14 annual plan, you requested an update on this, and on what the future of the guest room museum might achieve on that. Court battle on parenting points, there's some improvements being planned there. There's a report here with some options on the pitch program. Discussion of central city paving and some of the issues that we're having there and some of what's coming up. The Tahuna stage to upgrade by solids project, there's some discussion there about what we might be looking to do differently in that project. There's discussion about provision of non-floral air water supply that was also asked for to have a discussion. And these aquatic facilities, investing in the work also are. On the next page, we've got, I have a couple of pages for you on heritage incentives and the heritage rate trillion policy. So there's a proposal for two slightly different rates for the policy to rate the effort and the heritage reuse. But also there's an overview of what we are putting money into with the heritage area, and some discussion about how important that is in terms of the viability of the city and what else we might want to do there. Your most review of City Grant, and the way at the moment, so there's a paper about this effectively with a whole petition on City Grant. There's been some discussion last year in the plan about the bridge and busy, maybe more equipment and extra funding as a single year measure. Regent's are clear that there is, that they wish to have been discussed with you, or in a discussion with you, and we've got that paper. Last year, you asked for a little listing of the options for a separate little community complex was originally discussed as a separate little library, although it's now being in position as a joint community complex with several functions, so it's payable on that. Right, probably resilience, probably the resilience forum, which was asked to come in as well, and an update on those to save options from the last one. And that's what we have.
Thank you, Sue. And I know that Chief Executive's comments largely incorporated in the background and on the pages won't be long to address. But Paula, we'll now move on to community board issues, item four. And I should like to invite the Chair of the Chalmers Committee, Paul Steen Walker, to lead off. Go on, speak.
No, it's good to hear personal loss.
Now, can I welcome you to this meeting, and encourage you to spend the next five minutes regaining us with issues, Chalmers.
Thank you, Mayor. I see it's been very, very likely for the board area, the tragic events of last Wednesday night. And I'm sure the Mayor and councillor will join the board discussing the history of these two more affected tragic events of last week. Okay, thank you obviously for letting me speak today, and delighted to know the board is going to be asking for substantial capital investments above the beyond of its status quo. And in many cases, I think it's an important point, it's part of these issues, these issues should be reported in many situations in the area. You'll see all the copy of the issues are reported, so I'll just briefly summarise each of those, and feel free, just come there to tell me what you find. Okay, number one issue, as I've been here many times before, not only in my capacity as an elected member, but prior to that, the advocacy groups pushing for the completion, initially the start and then the completion of the cycle, offered cycle walkway, all the way to Port Chalmers. I don't think as a day goes by in the community, when I'm not asked about when it's going to be completed, and all processes are involved. And we're probably all aware that capital expenditure comes primarily from NZTA. And I would like to applaud the Mayor, the potential by-level negotiations, not only with municipal state, but with NZTA. And I'd just like to see that continued, and I know next year, to get into the 2015-18 funding progress, NZTA is a primary order. So I'd like to see council pushing as strongly as possible to have the car completed. And if I can, going back about nine years ago, when I sat here and spoke to many councillors, many improvement that have gone on to read the passages, they did talk about the fact that nobody would ever use this offered cycle walkway. And then if you go down there any day, anytime of the year, you'll see it's massively used by walkers, cyclists, people in wheelchairs, and from all over the city and abroad. So it'd be great to see that the final push takes all the way in the board. The second point is probably a great ongoing moment, it's a 30K project now certainly going on at Port Chalmers High Street. It's something the community has pushed for for many, many years. Slightly disappointed, I guess, that it took so long to get the trial up and running. And it's supported by a very, very high percentage of the community, 100% of the business community who live every day with the consequences of higher speeds. And again, I do applaud council staff for getting this trial up and running. And just so that we're all aware, the chance of dying, you get it by a little 50Ks, as opposed to 30Ks, is about seven percent decrease. And just over 200,000 crew passengers, now passengers who go to Chalmers by the cruise ships. I think it's very important that not only we provide a safe environment for the day and for our schoolchildren and for the residents, but also preserving probably one of the most beautiful and historic towns in New Zealand. So like, obviously, this great community will want to see that once the trial's completed, that happens, it's going to become a feature. Okay, item three, just about the board would like to see facilities with the community retained. Obviously, a very fantastically beautifully refitted and well-used library, and a swimming pool, obviously, is of utmost importance to the community. Most of our communities are located very close to the water's edge, and that's probably all the way. And you see, it has a pretty atrocious record throughout the OECD when it comes to people dying in the water. So I think that's really important, of utmost importance. And services, again, obviously maintain the standard, and obviously at the end, I'd like to say that there could be some room for improvement. If you go through any of the minutes over the past few years of the Chalmers Committee board meetings, you'll see that we often do have to get council staff into reminding about some of the contractors not really fulfilling the obligations for which they're paying. And there are obviously standards that are mentally adhered to in these sort of federal service element documents. And as a couple of the board members have pointed out, we had curbing like this, we'd actually be quite happy, but it's a lot worse. And in brochure, it says this is completely unacceptable, so, yep, that's a problem. And for discretionary fund, we live in hope, I've asked for an increase, but yep, it's certainly, we'd like to see the status quo maintained. And I think, again, if you look through over the years, the Chalmers Community Board area probably has more applications towards its discretionary fund than most other board areas. So we often are turning away people who have very notable causes. Sea walls, people for sea walls extending all the way from Port Chalmers out to Armanuara. And some of the repairs that were completed about three, four years ago are actually beautiful. Part of the repairs that widen the road to create a sidewalk area ultimately might link into the cycle walkway. And I do believe in recent conversations with the partners here that that, the process of that maintenance is going to begin again. And I think there's going to be a representative probably from the local authorities confirm that. Cruise ships, again, patting the back for council supporting, getting support for growing ships there. And also a pat on the back for many volunteers in Port Chalmers who give many, many thousands of hours to seeing that the officers have a good time. And final point, just state highway 88, obviously NZTA's responsibility, but as has pointed out, a lot of the linking DCC personnel into it. And just like to see the good work continue, because it's a good relationship between council and NZTA when it comes to looking after any problems along this particular road. And have I exceeded my time?
Hang on, actually. Thank you, Steve. Would any of the councils like to ask questions, have some attention?
Say thanks, I just wanted to be the trial finisher.
Trial finishes at the end of November.
On the same topic, Steve, the third case, the speed limit through the town, has it mitigated the potential for damage from the large trucks going through with the shaking of some of the buildings, that sort of thing, has that mitigated that?
Yeah, I think so, there was a survey done many, many years ago, which I do actually have access to, and I think we estimated that one truck going fifty And I think we estimated that one truck going 50 kilometers into like 3,000 cars. And any reduction, obviously, produces that when it's in this area to London. But yeah, it certainly helps. And if you speak to any of the shop owners, they certainly notice a decrease in shaking.
Yeah, thank you. Council members.
Thank you very much, Bill, Steve. I was just wondering what your opinion was the most important thing, that your discretionary fund was your discretionary fund, one of the most important things that have been spent from that issue.
Um, we've created certain things like sea scouts, taking to the water, schools, we have, uh, so many schools there, we've got probably about eight or nine schools in our area. And we're often, often asking for money, lots of local advocacy groups, a lot of people doing tree planting, a lot of people doing environmental work.
So quite a wide range, particularly in water.
Yeah, often a lot of the money that we do give away is, in essence, is, is helping council by reducing some costs when it comes to vegetation, people doing tree planting. So it's a good money from $10,000 well spent.
Thank you.
Um, speaking, thanks, Steve, for a very positive submission. I just, um, to take the, well, I want you to confirm or not, do you have a concern that there's been a reduction in that service levels of any kind? You talk about retention of current funding and some of this, is this an actual Port Chalmers caution? Or is this something more than that involved in those comments?
Yeah, I don't even think it's a recent thing. I think the problem we, we see, um, is the oversight of the contractors or the accountability of the contractors. And there obviously is a, they have the contract to carry a street cleaning, which often they do during the night in places like Ravenswood. Uh, the problem is the gutters are full of parked cars, so in the morning the cars leave, the gutters are still full of, um, yeah. And I think it's, often the contractors will come to the board meetings and say they have cleared ditch A B C. And we know from the people who live there, the contractors have been there for, what, two years? And recently we just had part of the contract was clearing a part of Tinaro at the hotel of one of them. And they've been there for five years, although it's part of the contract to be that area. So I think it's, to be able to sit down and perhaps have the board being able to, 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 to analyze where the contractors are perhaps not fulfilling the contract. Because at the end of the day, the taxpayers within the league are paying lots of money for these contracts to be carried out. And I think it's a bit disappointing for taxpayers, the contracts aren't fulfilled. So creating a better, better methodology by which both the contractor could work as a board, I would consider the other way forward.
Will you just make a note of that, Mr Chief Executive? I mean, it seems to me that it's great that the board is doing that oversight, but it's hardly the board's job to monitor contracts being led by the city.
No, I think Chief Executive is dropping down the steps, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve. Could I now invite Bill Feather from Mosley Tirey, Chair of Mosley Tirey.
Hello. Councillors, good morning. I too would like to thank you for the opportunity to refer to on issue soon as well, um, for giving a bit of a draft document. One of the aquatic services is like the most, um, prioritized issue on our books in this coming term. And the board at this point fully supports the council's decision to request the vestal free work of disaster. And we strongly urge that the council puts favour to consider consideration to the voting of the $80,000 that it will take to carry this work out. Now, the board strongly encourages the working hardest recommendation of the new port beside it in Moscow. And that improvements are made to the Moana Port Complex to give the city the aquatic services that it needs and deserves. But sadly, the board has already begun to engage with the greater Moscow community in seeking options for location design and funding. And we have been given a number of, a number of prominent citizens have advised us of their willingness to join the team and to work on this challenge. As I said, the board would be speaking amongst of it, um, yet, and bringing that to fruition and to give this council a very strong direction in what the community is able to provide and how it would best lead it. Of concern to us, is in the report that you are, well later in this meeting, consider, is the inclusion of what I believe to be a operational expense solution to minimize cost. And I don't believe that that cost or that project should be added to or be part of the aquatic services overall. That project needs to stand the fort on its merits as it is addressing something that currently exists and is an ongoing expense. And I don't know, in the papers that you have in front of you, I know that the, um, casual, the admission charges and higher charges for Moscow and Port Chalmers pool have been let out. And I don't know whether that's intentional, but if it is, then I would have to assume that perhaps the costs for admission to each of these pools would be the same as Moana Pool. And if that was the case, then that's closely on the table. But I'd like to think that this has been an oversight and that that part of the schedule is missing. Well, it has brought my attention that in terms of admission ticket costs, and particularly multi-admission tickets or concession tickets, season tickets, the purchase at the Moana Pool, at Moana Pool costs cannot be used for entry into one of the applying pools. And often is the case where people are in training programs, that the pool, the Moana Pool, is not available to them. They then have to pay for an additional entry, but it is a Moscow cost, which is called Chalmers cost, to use that pool to fit into the training. So if I could suggest that the council consider having, um, the Moana, uh, cost structure. Anybody that buys into that also gets admission to the other pools, we see that that structure. The other area of concern for us is, um, transport operations on the road. The Rickon Road has been discussed for a grand many years. And it was a concern to see that listed as a saving in this rounded budgets, that that area has been a detrict or has been identified that a saving of $100,000 over budget, over previously raised budgets, um, can be realized. I put it to you that the surface of that road and the width of the carriage road is such that it cannot go carrying the type of traffic, the size of the traffic for very much longer. And it would be most unfortunate, I believe, to reduce that budget when there's so much else that could be used for on that stretch of road. So I insist that the council give consideration to reinstating that budget. The board, um, has much interest in the work streets that are currently underway by council for district line. Um, it's the community that is, is adding to and submitting to, uh, the various aspects that are coming in for public consultation and will continue to do so. And the transport operations, the transport strategy is another, one of the most important to the area. To me, it seems that if we aren't prepared to put money into our roads to carry the sizes and volumes of traffic that we have, then we should look seriously at limiting what goes down our roads. Many of our streets, the intersections are not designed to carry the turn circles, it's something a larger freight moving, trucks and the like. And so therefore, if we are not serious and looking again, then we should take the other approach and that is to not let it pass down our roads. With that.
Thank you, Bill. Are there any questions from councillors? Yes, I'm doing.
As regards to Rickon Road, are you aware that the renewals budget, uh, that has a, an ongoing amount will be the main source of funding for the improvement in the Carriage Way as it currently stands in terms of the current lease?
Yes, I am. But I'm also aware that much of our more recent discussion over Rickon Road was looking at land acquisition for, um, increasing with the Carriage Way and that work was to be done in negotiating with, uh, landowners, um, purchase of their land. Uh, and also making arrangements for the shifting of installments so that when the work was to start in, um, two or three, four years' time, um, the, the Pedro's and such like would have become established. So there is no evidence of rights in, uh, in that respect.
That work is ongoing. That's the negotiations with the program along Rickon Road will make quite good progress, I think, I think it's important for the board. But just on that, we have made a progress around discussions with landowners about purchasing scripts of land provided for the road in wood. I suspect that the reduction, I think, as council members came through, the reduction renewal because of the nature of the roads need to be renewed in these spaces. Because we can only do it if we knew its funding is to invite a recent commission. But there is all the program that we'll see, we'll have done with land purchases in advance.
Council, McCann.
Well, I was just wondering, thank you, Bill, if need. Um, the, the query that I had was just about this, and you said that you had around pools passes. You were aware that there is an all pools pass that people can purchase?
Yes, but it's not accepted that. But my, my understanding was that, um, the person who spoke to me about it is a, a multi-distance athlete and trains regularly at Moana Pool. He has bought multi-concession ticket, um, that allows him to do that training. And, and as I said, uh, in my submission, statement that, um, on, on occasion, the pool is closed for, you know, other contracts maybe. It's, it's not available to him. But, and then he wishes to stream Moscow, then he has to buy a Moscow admission. And I don't like that to be fair.
So, so he has a pool pass for separately for Moana?
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, all right, thank you.
Councilor, a year or half later, it's going to let me bring my office and say that, uh, that somebody has the lack of electronic equipment in Moscow. You can't use those passes, but if you do have a pool and you do purchase a pass, they used to legally, that's a sense of failure, don't they? Probably you're extending through some of the boss one, probably shouldn't have, but we have the others that assist the electronic equipment.
Councilor Maynes.
Thanks for that, Bill. Um, you've talked about areas of concern of the board. Are you talking about the board of the last triennium or are you talking about the new board from this triennial?
The new board is met once. Um, they recently received the, um, the board's meeting plan that was prepared for this period, 14, 15. We might have an opportunity to, uh, hear this set in court. So in the past, um, in terms of the Rickon Road scenario, it's a continuation of a previous board in the situation in relation, in relation to the public services, there's a combination of.
Councilor. Thanks, Bill. Um, you're, you said that you're endorsing the allocated budget for the council to continue or to investigate pool options in Moscow, but also, um, there is still that a number of prominent citizens in the community are, are having to come on board for design and particularly funding of that facility. I'm just wondering how you see those two things, I mean, because the, the second is a direct bearing on the first, obviously.
The, the recommendation, um, that was made to the council and accepted in the last triennium, or this department with, uh, with the community in respect to, um, the pool. And the council, my understanding is that the council is looking for the community to give a contribution to the funding of this pool. And in respect to that, that also is being asked to have a statement on where it should be sited and what this, uh, the community wants in respect to a pool and other of this design. So therefore, inputs, the board certainly doesn't have a fine to say in these matters, but it is being asked to consult with the local community and then for, uh, that, what this council is taking back decision.
Thank you, Bill. Moving on to the second board, time to wait, Scott Miller, to the table. Scott.
I think that we must, um, we'll just run you through what our priorities are and our, our board have had extensive discussion on what our priorities are. That's why we sort of, uh, have been there for emails, just because, uh, making the courses, you know, we're just stressing that. So our, our main priority is to improve it for parts and occur being, we've got a number of communities, a number of roads, uh, and main roads. But then our community that just don't have footpaths, being done here for curving, uh, we would aim for a footpath on the side of every road in our, each of the communities, uh, as our initial goal, uh, and then work towards maybe a footpath heading on the other side. That's something that we, we ask for some looking at from the council and councillors. Um, but in saying that, acknowledging that, we, we have got some good work happening in regards to some of the streets in Broton. We've got a public consultation meeting next week to, to further investigate some of this stuff in regards to Broton, but the accident, we use that simply because. Uh, Broton Main comes up on a route of basis, I think you're all aware. Um, for us, we have had a lack of buying from the council and council staff, and that's a frustration throughout the municipal. Um, we want to develop a management plan and a development plan for that main. We have ongoing concerns in regards to drainage. We've rigged a period for a month on it during the winter months when we have slightly higher than average rainfall, uh, where the domain is particularly unusable. So that's something that we have asked council for support for in the past peasant heaven. So I think they're a bit of a way really. Um, the direction that we get from the department for managers is that this project needs to be led by the community board. We have to do that, but it needs to be hard to achieve. To the extent that on February, at the closure of that community board meeting, which will be held in Brockham or, uh, I'm going to have a public consultation meeting around that. And rural roads, uh, we acknowledge that in previous, um, budgets that rural roads and ceiling of, uh, ceiling, uh, ceiling of unsilled roads apparently have been taken out of the budget since 2016. Uh, that's something that we acknowledge. Um, we, we know that the Alton can develop next to heaven and that, and that's driven well. But we need to continue to maintain these roads as best we can until they are sealed. Uh, so we'd ask for that, uh, so rig the grading and upkeep of those. Uh, but we would ask for free interruption of ceiling of unsilled roads back into the budget post that period of immediate crisis to the financial situation. We've got, again, a number of roads, as do, uh, the community boards, but, um, we've got a number of roads that continue to be unsealed, um, and on average, the. of roads that continue to be unsealed and on average, the amount is maintained. Road safety continues to be a concern for everybody in North State. We've had some winds in this area for us, Old Brighton Road outside the Pickett School has been an ongoing concern for us, and we've worked with council in the last year, we've had some winds. Reallocated flash in signs outside Old Brighton Road is highlight the less than crossing from the top of the hill there has gone in, which is great, and I think the council, the councillors, for that. We just need to continue to do some work on that because it continues to be narrow road, especially when cars park either side around that drop-off pickup of schools. And this efficient parking and drop-off areas that the community and school are re-allocating strong for, we just need to do some more work on that. Stour Hilton continues to be a flag for us, obviously, and we hope that we can maintain that flag in that occasion as a pay to this council moving forward. The last councillors, the last councillors too, the now CEO, the mayor and the previous councillor, whether or not really did flag it for us, and they worked really, really hard, and we'd ask this community, this council to continue to do that work. We acknowledge that it's in front of the environment board at the moment, and we thank yours for that. We'd ask that this council go any further and ask that all quarrying of the steel cease, not just the protection of the original. Just before I'm closing, I'd like to talk about, the CEO talks about some good facilities that have happened over the last few years and on behalf of our areas, we thank you for that. Really exciting going forward in the next year, and the Brighton community will have a new supply, some government and community facility, that's kind of a focus. A lot of people coming into our community and we're excited about that. But also with the sunny old sports complex development going to be happening as well. So they're still working on some funding there, but that's really, really exciting for our area. Obviously, through the media, there's been some discussion in regards to the road strips and the cost of dumping road. We would ask that this council look at that again. We do see against, unfortunately, the council staff's suggestion is that there is an increase in roadside dumping. Whenever we see an increase in typeface, so we'd ask that you look at it. I'm closing on the volume of the Brian Galloway for Saturday. Start the team, go to about five, that's why we've been there, complimenting the several community boards now, just another way to engage with that.
Thank you, Scott. Can I just kick off the questions? Ask you about your comments about the maintenance of brown roads. Do you feel at the moment that there are some that are insufficiently maintained? I'm through that from what you said.
Yeah, sure. I guess we just need to continue to be really aware that they need to be maintained and replaced places. So again, just regular work and communication for the contracts.
So what I'm asking is, do you think that that getting to, in some cases, to a point below which is accepted, in terms of maintenance?
I think we're just, yeah, maybe I hope it is, I step, but we just continue to maintain this, our, our policy, ensure that the contractors, the owners, the owners, they need to be, we can.
Questions, councillor.
Scott, when you're talking about the Brighton Domain, is the plan being a low priority? And I don't know the answer to this question itself, but is the plan a low priority because we haven't got a plan? Or do we have a plan, it's the implementation of the plan that's not being carried about?
So I guess we've sort of been around the bush for a few years, been here, I guess with Z and we were on that, just saying that the department that we work with on a route of basis, we're developing a plan on our behalf. It's sort of got cracks, we, we, that wasn't going to be the case, so we need to develop that plan, of course, if we can, the council and the department are concerned, have some development.
It's good that there was a coastal reserves, I think, planned, put in place some time ago, and obviously Brighton wasn't captured there for some reason or other. So there is no plan and there needs to be a plan.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, and that's all.
Councillor?
Morning. Just wanted, do you have your points in order, in the sense of quick pass to?
That's correct, yeah.
And just, would you say some streets are extremely dangerous? Does that indicate that heavy injuries here or is it a big mistake?
I'd say unfortunately, it's really difficult to reach the name of this, but you know, there's a section on Brighton Road, which is our main road from, I should do, sorry, from Green Island Brighton through to South Brighton, we are under damage. Through Westwood, there's no footpath.
This has been an issue for you for some years, or are you just waiting?
No, it's been ongoing, we've been progressing. Now it's sort of creeped up to that is now our number one priority.
And obviously, that connection with the startup council staff?
Yeah, we're always watching for the guys, we're just asking for a bit extra support and making some funds available.
Thank you very much, Scott. Now, the next submission is from Strathclyde. We've had an apology from the chair, Barry Williams, so to channel Barry, you can't count on the board. So you must, well, you cannot speak from there.
I was, yeah, because they don't think that we're going to say. I didn't have, well, actually, given a report, so all I got was a phone call on the way in, it's just that, quite simply, the Strathclyde people consider themselves not great watchers, but they do, one of them feels they're also not great getters, and they are, we're concerned about that, here some different roads as well. They also, I wonder about the service agreement, things like the port, and just some service agreements, I'm trying to adjust to some art, and I was wondering if these are practical there, because they're in the front of the, they're going to be called for their own community. So basically, that was all I was told, they really don't get a half of it, they were worried about, but they just want to see that the service teams are continued, and they're strictly not, they're behind, so just like.
Do you feel, thank you for that, do you feel able to be informed by Mr. Williams to take questions?
Oh, that's because if anyone's got me, but on the basis of what I've given, I haven't had to speak to me. Fair enough. If I ask you, it's councillor, I won't give anything to you first.
You don't, of course, want to ask a question of yourself?
No.
Right, we'll move on to Weymouth Coast, Mr. Collins.
Your worship, councillors. So, thanks very much for the opportunity to address you today. The board have reviewed the proposed draft annual plan and the reports attempt. I would note, however, this year, we were a little bit stretched for going. The time given to boards, I feel personally, was not adequate to give due consideration of the documentation of the council, I can say, if we excuse that. That aside, we have made significant attempts to be together, to discuss, and we do commend Sir Maitland for the work that he's been doing to prepare the documentation. I am able to talk to staff correctly and understand the reasons why, and the reasons why we're totally out of control, so mainly this here. The board are concerned and want an assurance from the council that the savings that we're achieving are not going to be at the cost of service standards or infrastructure such as roads, footpaths, water supply, waste, and a much in the recreation areas. We really, really do seek that assurance. We have had comment from members of the community that they feel things are slipping a little. While I'm not directly located in that, I do want to, while I have the council's ear, just comment on McCrae's mine. We've had a significant increase in gas prices. McCrae's have clearly foreshadowed the closure of the mine in two years' time. Our community are used to losing industries of this size, although it has been sometimes a status quo. We do, however, seek some assistance from council for us to identify the impacts for our community going forward. More importantly for me is to relay some of the concerns that may be within the community so we can have some clear factual statements about the likely impacts on schools, on the quantity of fibre gates, and others that rely on that industry for the mission. The event attraction fund, the board have to be convinced of the benefits of the event attraction fund. All we ask council to do is to review and evaluate us on the benefits or otherwise of that investment. Waiteri toilets, we thank the council last year for their commitment to have staff review a joint proposal for 100% capital funding for the community, and the ongoing measurements for council for a new facility or a facility in Waiteri. We welcome working with staff over the next few months, but we do ask that council, subject to those discussions being favorable, give consideration to some minor design costs in next year's annual plan to allow the community in time to take thunder as adventure. Mount Locken Reserve, we still want council to focus on to Mount Locken Reserve. We are a little bit concerned with board that maybe the pest plant control is not being kept up adequately. Hope everyone lies on their mind at some stage.
Say your name.
Thank you, Paul. Coastal Centre Group, the board would like council to commit the next year's annual plan to brand the coastal centre group. Signposting has been put up, but we think that next brand next year is extremely important. The inclusive and clean-up days are considered by the board a necessary part of the waste management system in our area, and we're pleased to see the continuation of that within the next annual plan. Landfill charges, we're slightly concerned at the level of profit being generated from the landfills. While it may be prudent to budget for surpluses in such a surface, the amount indicated in the O E T, not yesterday, the day before, would appear to be excessive. If councillors of the mine continue with such surpluses, we suggest that these should be targeted at either a decrease in the waste portion of roads or into waste minimization strategies, as opposed to directly into the general rate. If we're going to take money from a particular activity to create a profit, let's at least pump it back into some benefit within the same activity. Reserves and coastal management, with the Weymouth Coast Community Board, we have one of the longer coastlines within the Denee City Council. There are two particular areas that we are particularly mindful of in relation to coastal erosion, both of which are sites of significant infrastructure for our communities, hopefully the city, and we seek an ongoing monitoring program of the erosion of those areas so we're not caught short. We support the continuation of the year-by-year housing project. We continue to ask that the discretionary fund be maintained. The mining out swimming pool, we're going to be pleased to see that funding has been there for the assistance to the community group that runs that. Capital development contribution, I know from the agenda that a new or a proposed capital development contribution is to be discussed in committee further down the track within this meeting. As a board, we would have liked the opportunity to be able to provide comment on that proposed policy before council made a commitment, or I fear that that won't be an opportunity for them. Denee Beautiful and Taskful Screen, we'd like to oppose those to some streams of the pipe, but we feel that the work they do within our community provides to the overall benefit of the city as a whole. We support the transfer of the budgets as proposed in report section 12.1 in relation to the business implication and the student entrepreneur, excuse me, budgets. We feel that consolidation of those budgets will be the wise move, council. In debt servicing, as always, we continue to support council's current policy of applying surpluses directly to the service of debt. Thank you.
Thank you, Gerry. Questions, councillors?
Just a few, you've got to answer the development contribution, so that you realise that that one has been, we discussed, that we've frequently carried on the feedback that we had from you guys amongst others last time, last, this time last year?
Yeah, I'm fully aware of that, but I suppose what we would have liked as a board is now that staff have come back considering those particular matters, rather than waiting until it is formally put out to the community, we would like the opportunity to discuss the findings in the direction prior to this council which will concern the trust of this.
And in terms of the recommendations that you make around landfill charges, either to decrease the waste portion of rates paid by rate pay, rate pays, or an increase in waste lands programs, because it obviously needs general rates, any decrease in the waste portion of rates paid by rate pays would result in equal and opposite increase in the general rate?
That's correct.
Yeah, so you would, that would be your preference?
To me, as a matter of principle, if we're taking money from what is a core service of council, then we should be funding or streaming that, those surplus funds back into that core service. And if you apply that principle into water, if we started charging water, we want to think we started creating surpluses in water and applying just general rate.
So you would then, you would have the same position of, for example, parking charges?
Personally, we've already discussed it. In my mind, parking, you should go back into the transport area of this.
Thank you.
That's a good one.
Thank you, Gerry. Thank you for your submission. Have you heard the comments made by, on behalf of the Stour Hilton Community Board, and also about contract supervision of contracts? I'm just minded to ask you, given what you're saying in the third paragraph about service leaders, is that an issue, or would you make a similar observation?
Well, for a start, I try and, if I'm able to, delve into what I consider management issues, which are looking at the contracts. From my point of view, I think council need to encourage the community to use the facilities available, such as picking up the phone, calling the help desk and lodging initiative. I think that probably, in most of the issues we see in relation to maintenance, because of a lack of reporting, you physically cannot get staff members down each and every road each and every day. What I do, or would like to see council do, is ensure that they have faith in the contractors that they're doing the job, and that the community knows that they need to pick up the phone and they'll get it responded to. From our words perspective, we want to hear from the people working down, not the people anywhere in the room.
I'd give that one a question.
Thank you, councillor. In regards to the phrase mine, do you have any rough indications now what you think the impact would be on the community? I have some of my own personal considerations. And there are a lot of local contractors that service the industry as well. My personal feeling is that I don't know that the likes of the work by the community will be as disadvantaged to some of the others, like the Palmerston. But again, without that level of work, I am a little concerned that we're still going a little inclined. I know for effect the likes of the mine are driving, relying on workers at the mine to possibly lose, and likewise the local school, have a number of families that are teaching people. We, our community has survived the likes of the close, closure of the Tudor Fund Hospital, which was the greater employee of the community than McCrae's miners. And I think, from my point of view, the benefit of undertaking a study is getting the community this infection rather than infection, evidence about the likely impact. this infection rather than infectional evidence about the likely impact.
And just one quick question regarding landfill charges. Like Setwell Hill community board, are you seeing any more rubbish being dumped around the area?
I haven't seen any injuries, so to speak, in relation to illegal dumping. Unfortunately, some of the community don't look at the wider benefits to the community and look after their own interests. That's been ongoing for many, many years. The reality is some people are lazy, some people just want to pay. The reasons is where people pull up to the gate, free most, and all of a sudden it's closed, so they're on some rest of the road, if you want. I don't necessarily believe that the current level of charges at the moment is causing, or is the cause of the tap to the number. But I don't think also that an increase in charges would be in any systems.
Thank you. Enter the members. Thank you very much for your comprehensive coverage of a number of issues. Council have touched on the development contributions issue. One aspect of it that you might be able to help me with is, well, what does the board really think of the fact that Deneen has traditionally had very low taking of development contributions? Does the board want, want to see that low take continued? Does it want to see the rate payers continuing to essentially subsidise developments? Or does it want to see Deneen come more into line with other cities where we actually start charging for all the services that we supply to developers?
I think the board, because of the late introduction or the lack of ability for the board to contribute, I cannot comment this current board in relation to the particular views, but in general discussions that we have had and reiterating the previous view, the board is not opposed to capital development contributions. We are however opposed to capital development contributions that are going to be applied respectively to funding decisions that have already been made. In principle, there is absolutely nothing wrong with a capital development's contribution where council have knowingly made an investment decision based on the fact that they expect that it comes to come.
Okay, so you're not opposed to us bringing out development contributions up to a more standard level, but you don't want to dump it specifically?
I think the board's view last year also was that we want to ensure that council put in development contributions that are in mind that do not inhibit the price.
Okay, great, thank you for that, that helps. And the Events Attraction Fund, I've long personally liked the idea of actually seeing a really good cost benefit analysis of the fund. Would an independent cost benefit analysis be something that you would seek for the Events Attraction Fund, or will you be happy for staff to do their own cost benefit analysis?
On the basis that the fund has only been placed for this one, the one project in a year, I'm very skeptical about any cost benefit analysis that isn't based on factual information. From my point of view, there was potentially time within this one year before council made the final decision at adopting the annual plan to undertake some assessment and that can be internally, or of protection benefits, we are prepared for this one.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, thanks Jerry. I'd like to talk a little bit about, you said that the board and other quarters, the submission says that the board is supportive of the proposed business incubation and student entrepreneurial budgets. I'm wondering whether that's purely from a financial perspective, or whether that indicates an interest in your community or the community board to be more involved in that part of work as part of the economic development?
No, it's merely having rapid augmentation, but it's an item that the board would consider. With two smaller budgets, we think council could better bangs out of the buckets by pulling them together and combining them.
And in light of that, do you feel that your community board area is adequately sort of present by the economic development?
Well, that's, that's not a very big question to answer, but I shall answer it. We have many, many years asked for a greater involvement with council and council staff in relation to not only economic development, but the tourism strategy and other factors as well. We feel that in relation to the things we have to offer the city, we assume a fifty thousand points of experience.
Thank you Jerry. Appreciate it. And final, can you boys take a mention, can I wait? Just to get a return.
Thank you very much. Please have the opportunity to speak with you today in the heart of the department and our board. There is one project that is likely to dominate annual plan submission this year, but I think that will come as a priority. However, the board is yet to meet to consider its priorities for the annual plan, and our final submission may well include other items, including the only beach erosion and brown projects that we can, of course, succeed with that. Handcuffed home management is another issue of great interest. But today we're going to focus on the Porta Valo Road and Hamilton Point Road Safety Improvement Programme. It's a very long title for something that's often known as the Peninsula Cycle Way. Have the rise trust that it is a safety improvements programme. This project has the overwhelming support of the majority of the Peninsula community, as was reflected in the 2013 annual plan submissions, and that did include one submission. Because of the crisis issue, it was counted as one submission, it had nearly 300 signatures on the petition. And there is also overwhelming support for the current approved sequence. The board acknowledges that progress council has made to date on this project, and we would particularly like to acknowledge today the work of the staff who have used their considerable expertise to secure the very important E D T A subsidies, prepare and lodge as is set, and ensure that capital funding is in the council's role to plan out the protection of the project. And we are very grateful for their work and for council's involvement. It has been a tremendous sport of excellent concentration by council and staff with our board, and we trust it will continue to be integrated to the project. I want to just talk a little bit about that one, because I know that we have some new councillors and it's really important to us that the bodies are on the same page and has the context. The project is set to deliver a significant safety improvement for pedestrians, cyclists, vehicles and our Peninsula communities, connecting them and producing solid benefits while unlocking potential for new businesses in the world. There is no doubt that once completed, it will also be a major asset towards the modern city. The Peninsula community has spoken very clearly over a number of years that the priority needs to be given to the settlements of Porta Valo and Port Bay as a matter of urgency now that the McCandrie Bay section is completed, to ensure that our schoolchildren can walk to school safely and that our residents in those settlements are a part before the needs of the visitors. The board has strongly advocated for its residents in this regard, and while the safety of all who live, work and visit is of vital importance, it is the safety of our children that is our top priority. The benefits for the McCandrie Bay community from the road widening have been substantial, and as per council's social wellbeing strategy, very significant in terms of community connectedness and strength building, community resilience. The McCandrie Bay community has referred to it to our board in our training, that it supports the priorities as they stand with Port Bay and the Wood Valley next in life, while acknowledging that they are supporting the McCandrie Bay city connection being completed, especially for those that are still community by cycle. The current approved programme has implications for crash reduction in high-risk built-up area, where there is, and I quote from the U D S C Crash Reduction Weekend Declaration of four twenty in March 2017, there is an increasing crash trend in parts of the Port Bay and Port Bay sections. You may not be aware that this project and its current timing also affects the coast guard. They are awaiting their repair quarters to be built in conjunction with the road widening and are basing that on the current sequence. Once they have their repair quarters there, well then they can launch their boat directly and it will save up to half an hour in terms of rescue time, and that's very significant. Interlays to the current sequence will delay the delivery of their safety gain. And of course, the touristic liberation project again, this is based on current approved priorities. Some other points that I want to make is that the project began as a Peninsula Board initiative, it was already led, and we are very grateful that the council has supported it. It's fully extent completed over the last ten years. Some, at times, that's felt like a very long time, but that's how it's been. We've heard that our Peninsula community contributes over a hundred million dollars for wildlife tourism, which means that we really do expect to have a considerable influence in what happens. You make the decision, what we do hope and trust that you listen to us. You may not be aware, some of your delays are already occurred, I might believe, the section from Owen to Port to Hamilton, which dropped off stage one of the project. And also, road widening at Port Bay and Port Valo settlements would have been started this year, but are already delayed into next year in the current approved programme. Any further delays are unacceptable to the community. Feels like we get closer and go a close shift. The Green Bikes Project was a new footy business that's just been established in the last month based on the current approved programme. The excellent steps completed in the road widening under the current approved priority is some mitigation and other things. I just watched a note that the proposed review of the sequence on this project that you brought together today and discussed a report. I was given a report two days before Christmas, the board doesn't meet until this year of January, and community boards as we know are actively discouraged from meeting and making decisions between the unofficial meetings. The intervening period has also been holiday time and discussion between board members of the community not possible. And therefore, the process used to discuss various significant measures with our board has felt like a very small one. It has also noticed that the current approved programme, in terms of sequence, is not offered as an option for council to consider in the proposed review, and we have grown some sense about that. However, the board trusts that council will take into account the view of the overwhelming majority of the Peninsula community today, that this project being completed will not be the delays and for any other projects to be studied, such that may affect funding. It's felt like other projects have come over the top of this time for us, and in particular, that the current approved programme needs here to be changed. You know, I was sort of looking at a quote, it's actually an article I've read across, but it just reflected the priority for us. There is no keener revelation of society's soul than the way it treats its children. And that's what we're keeping in focus of ours that we're making. We look forward to making an oral submission on this, this matter at the end. Thank you.
Thank you Christine. Chris, council back to you.
Thanks Chris. Forgive my ignorance, where is the Coast Guard building going to be built?
It's going to be built just by the duty on that reclamation.
Oh, that Porta Valo?
Yes, that Porta Valo. And at the moment, they launch it from Bay.
Right.
And you know, somebody in the way of the licence, but it takes good drive. If you've got coast to the distance of the river, just go straight down the river, there's no difficulty in walking.
So it's going to be built on an area that is going to be further reclaimed, is that the intention?
No, it's part of the reclamation, if you remember.
Yeah.
We did an extra stage of that reclamation.
Okay, thank you.
Council.
Thank you, we should, Chris, you alluded to the work that's already been achieved with the road safety improvements has reduced the excellent stats, you made that comment like that. I just wondered, has there also been part of the reduction in those stats, has, has the ADK reduction right across the peninsula area, has that also had an impact from a reduction in our excellent stats?
Antidocally, I won't be research on it, but antidocally, I would say we still have huge concerns, and we also have a huge issue with unaccompanied accidents, like a mission was being, because there are a commander a month for boat on this matter, because, for example, in the week just before Christmas, one day was in five hours, three accidents, two on highway. And it's an absolute miracle that we have not had to charge us, and we, the riders are back and forgiven. I mean, there's always going to be, to expect this, to make their decisions, but if the riders are forgiven, it doesn't seem too much of a risk. But I feel, I think that we feel like we're moving a borrowed time on that regard.
Good question. Thank you Christine, your submission.
Thank you very much. I'll leave you to your seat.
Right, councillors, we will move on to item five, which has been overarching motion, and I'll move from the chair that council, interestingly, may have been all about the council, we consider the termination of all submissions received in the draft and the second of council's standards, any discussion on that? For all those who played, please say hi.
Hi.
Yes, carry. We will adjourn now, but timing is immaculate, we aim for half past ten, I know we did it, but we have, so we're going to adjourn now for many a break, and the chairs and municipal leaders who are here are invited to join us, and it's in the hotel room, and we should be back. Again, for... Right, councillors, we will resume. We're on to item, Jerry, item six, and there is a further overarching resolution, which I shall move, and that is, to the chief executive, any resolution made in this section, the meeting made, subject to further discussion and decision by the council's standards, discussion, all those who played, please say hi.
Hi.
Yes, carry. Now we move through, so we move through to section two, and what I propose to do is just move through the various activity areas and seek people's comments for questions, but I will hand over in first instance to chief executive to talk about the withdrawal of the paper on business incubation and innovation status. This makes no difference to the budget allocation, as you're considering it, it's just a report that chief executive felt was, would be better to, that before council.
So when the, when the bundle of papers went out to you and the number of people, the papers were actually big, they retained pretty clear details of my duties, understanding what's ever actually meant, and what the budget implications were, and reading it, we can see why it's not as clear, two people talk, two very clear sets of thoughts about what the implications were, or what budget implications were. So clearly, it's not as clear as it needs to be. And in addition, what it's done is it's raised on a wider, questions that have been going around for a while, about transparency around the economic development strategy budget, the pool of funding that's available for projects that will, that economic development strategy client, how that process works and the transparency of their, your part in that. And so, as we've seen, the master budgetary paper, we pulled that paper today, and instead, when we were trying to report, we covered off in that wider context of the economic development strategy, spending all along in that, and we bring that to the Economic Development Strategy Committee meeting, the boost round of committee votes.
Okay, so I'll move through the various activity areas and the pages that I'll refer to in the larger of the two, I'll just put the various papers. So tourism, Deneen, pages two, page two seven, and please, I'll just move through slowly to each of these, if you have any questions to ask, staff can be asked questions, just to clarify. If there is a report, we'll be starting being on the table to answer any questions. If there isn't a report, then it won't be, but it doesn't mean we're answering questions or to chief executive. to be answering questions or Chief Executive. So now, so Castle Mac Tann.
Just a quick query on Tourism Delete. They proposed increased inflation.
Yes.
Yes, it's inflation, remember in mind, they've been known for this for four years. So it's not by any means catch up for the whole four years. There's inflation and some amount of catch up in the US, we may go like, they're ultimately too tired.
Moving on to Council Communications and Marketing, two point one three. Delete the centre, two point one nine.
Yes.
Castle Mac Tann.
The higher operational expenditure that's coming through, that is higher than what was projected and what is being experienced by D E M L. Is there a way to try to find out what causes that is and whether it can be reduced?
Three, Worship, yes, that is higher than anticipated expenditure. So some of it's coming through our city property, I make terms equal things right in mechanical maintenance, so those costs are paid by the council. And the electricity incomes, they go through D E M L and they are higher than anticipated.
And is there a way to try to find out why that is higher than projected?
Worship, we might just need to come back to you about that.
That's fine, yeah.
Visit the centre, two point two five.
Sorry, I should, the question. The query that I have on this is seeing as we've been expecting reduced Easter revenue, that struggling slightly of that, instead our operating expenditure would be increasing with these like staff costs, that we're projecting your time, that is perhaps twice over the next two years.
The issue we had, and two events, the Special Olympics, that was a one-off extra revenue, and we actually really put ourselves out to cover that in the existing staff costing. The staff costs, that is the inflation cost, that's different.
If I may just say, while we're thinking, council, it would touch this, being a small number of departments of council, revenue generating departments of council, that appear that revenue targets that have been frankly unachievable for many years. And rather than come to you with an honest revenue target that Louise has a hope of reaching, we have simply put up with the fact that she hasn't reached it, and then we've covered it with the budget surplus. So for other departments that have more than this target or are speaking of overseas, we've begun a process of fixing it. We fixed it in resource concerts last year. And by just dropping the price, attempt to give a more realistic budget to Louise and a couple of other departments this year. So we're trying to budget, we are not clear whether we should be able to meet the targets that are in here, and we don't fudge those shortcomings and hardships, you know.
Thank you, Christine.
Good questions. Waipori, thank you, Louise. Waipori Fund, two point two nine.
So the, sorry, the fact that we will be getting a report back on potential economic investment options through this fund, I don't know whether or not there is any implication in that report as to whether or not it might have budgetary implications, should we wish to take that approach. But I'm just wondering how that fits in with the annual plan timetable and whether there is a need for them to us to consult with our community on that, should we wish to.
Yes, so you are giving a report back on economic investment, a sort of an introduction to economic investment and what it means. The report that has been done is an angle on, if you treat it in a particular way, what would the budgetary impact be? Staff will take you through that and come and talk to you if that is part of that decision or is part of that briefing. And from there, we'll then come back to you with a decision report on what you might want to build there.
And would it be a month later, please?
Yeah, it would be so easy.
And time for us to go out to consultations and that can be.
Councillor.
Yeah, if I could just add to that, that what it'll tell you is if you'd done various things 10 years ago, what the impact might have been. It's not going to be quite so good at telling you if you do it now, what the impact will be. But my question is around the, we've got a flatline assumption around what we're going to draw out of Waipori Fund, but I just wonder if you could update everybody just where we are in terms now of the parameters that we, we, you know, we have a policy around, but we've, we've not met over recent years, and we've got a lot closer than that. But where does this leave us in terms of that policy?
Three, Worship, the amount that we've taken out, arguing about the inflation program, is that what is done, updated on? So I'll get the latest information from the board and then we'll be back to you. I'll get that quickly.
Okay, that's the additional accounts stating.
Actually, I'd just like to say something about the stadium. It's become increasingly obvious to us that the existing model that was set up to run the stadium needs to be fundamentally reviewed and rebuilt. It's now clear to me that the, or to all of us, that the original budgets were, and the original way of setting up and running the stadium, set up in a manner that would suggest that the stadium would immediately play its way. With two years of operation under our belts now, and a clearer idea of what it can actually achieve, it's now apparent that the original budgets have proven to be fundamentally optimistic. I can't, with faith, continue to come to you every year, keep in hand, to ask for extra money to, to try and make the current model work. That's part of this annual budget process. We've done that each year for the last two years. You'll recall, we came here and asked for $750,000 to cover the community goodies, speak them to add to the budget. Last year, we asked for $400,000 for an infrastructure fund to go into the budget. It has not worked to enable the stadium to meet its budget in either of those two years, and it will not work by early game this year. So I don't want to do that. We need to come up with a solution for you, all of us, once and for all. This current situation has really benefited our staff morale. So for staff who are trying to run the stadium, they know that they can't hope to meet their revenue targets. And that, that is not a good way to incentivize your staff to maximize their return. For my own staff, they've spent years now watching and knowing that they're going to have to try and make this work. And for staff right across the council, they're having to find budget savings and things that they would like to be doing on behalf of the ratepayers to plug the gap. They're having to make those savings year in and year out to plug this gap. And many of you councillors, and frankly, many of our ratepayers are rightly tired of it. It needs to be fixed once and for all. So on that basis, I'm asked for a complete and fundamental review of the structure under which we operate, or under which we deliver the stadium and the budgets that go with it. And we're doing this in conjunction with the Board of D C H L and Board of D E M L. We'll seek accurate information from a wide variety of sources about how we should tackle this change, and it will be completed and presented to you by the middle of the year. Throughout this process, everything that can be made public will be. This will be an open and transparent review, and we will put everything that we can into the public domain around this process. The draft budgets that you've got in front of you today do not allow for any additional funding for the stadium for the coming year. So the level of funding that's in here is what was put into the 13 and 14 annual plan process. It's $9.125 million for 2014 and 15. So that's what remains in the budget. But I do need to say that we absolutely know that the stadium cannot meet that budget. We cannot meet that revenue production. So the point of view is to come back to you with a budget that we know can be with the way of operating the stadium that we know we can make. I'll come back to you with some recommendations about the operating model of the stadium and the budget. A additional ratepayer fund that is needed. We will also come back with options for achieving that, and we'll present those to you as well at the same time of the review. And our commitment is to come back with ways that minimize any additional impact on our ratepaying. So there's two parts to this. When I talk about the operating model for the stadium, what I'm talking about is the model by which we're building. A building's owned by one entity, it's operated by another entity, there's an agency agreement by another entity, there's funding by other entities. This is, this is a very complicated operating model that was set up theoretically to maximize, to maximize the chance that it would be able to pay for itself. That needs to be looked at. And in addition, the way that the stadium is being operated on the ground and looking at efficiencies there also needs to be looked at. And so we are, we're going to do both, we invite the council to lead in.
Thank you. Sue.
Thank you. A question in respect of what you've just added, Miss Bideros, the review you're proposing does that also include the management structure of D E M L?
Yes, yes, it does.
So that, that will be a review, that will be a thorough going review of their structure and operations as well as regulatory issues, so you started.
Yes, that's right, the entire operating model. So the Chair of the D E M L Board alluded to this, and I bet you see how it's going to be taken part in this management review, that's part of this process.
Councillor.
What Chief Executive has just basically outlined is a situation where we have low staff morale at the stadium, and that we need to get a budget that will work. What I believe we actually have is a situation where we have a management structure and a culture at the stadium, which is essentially self-certified and designed not to work, and has traditionally put out its hand, knowing that it would get millions more to continue not working. I've got evidence here to show that staff from the stadium have been traveling the world, supposedly to get the beans to come to the stadium. But they've been traveling the world and putting themselves up at hotels for $280 a night. They've been traveling the world.
Councillor Anderson, I'm not taking issue with anything you're saying, but I'm just wondering about the appropriateness of it here. Chief Executive's outlined a thorough going review, and my suggestion is the appropriate place for the information to allegations that you have is into that review. It's preempting it by exploring it here, and it's not relevant to the budget here. So can I suggest that you restrict yourself to asking questions or referring to the Chief Executive's stated intentions, rather than getting a head of what the Chief Executive has said we're going to do?
I'm referring to the Chief Executive's statement just now that we have low staff morale among the stadium employees. And what I'm saying is that.
What I, Councillor Anderson, what I'm saying is that I don't want you to continue, because this is not an appropriate time to be bringing this information, presenting this information that's getting up here of the review, and I invite you to provide that to the review. That's the appropriate place for it. Because this is not relevant at the moment to the budget that we're considering. But it is relevant to what the Chief Executive has indicated she's going to continue.
If there is enormous waste by staff at Foresight Bar Stadium, and if we are being continually asked to increase payments such as the $400,000 a tranquil being statement from last year, which I voted against, because I could see no good coming of it, and no good has, the community good, three quarters of a million that we have in front of us today.
Councillor Anderson, as I said, this is information or assertions that I invite you to put to the review.
No, this is, with respect, your Worship, this is information in front of us on page two point three three, which I, as a councillor and a ratepayer's representative, wish to speak to.
Well, I'm suggesting that you need to speak to it briefly and relevant to the overall budget, because the CEO has already said that it is all going to be reviewed. And there's no point in preempting that review and putting out your opinion on it here when it's, it's more relevant to the review.
So. What the CEO has said, as I heard it, was that the current budget will not work despite the pumping of these millions into it.
Exactly.
And that it is the budget that needs to be changed. What I'm saying is that there is very strong evidence to suggest that the structure of D E M L needs to be changed. I have long called for the direction.
Councillor Anderson, that is exactly the point I'm making. The CEO has said that this review will be of the structure, of the management, of the model, everything.
Well, what you're saying is that it's the budget which you want to change.
Your points can be made to that, and I'm not going to allow further discussion. It's just duplication and a waste of time in this.
For the record, your Worship, I wish it to be noted that I feel that my contribution regarding the information that I have here and what I wish to say about this budget has been shut down by you.
That's right. Councillor.
I, sorry, just wanted to add a comment, which I think we've just got to be mindful of. I totally endorse what the CEO was saying. The, but at the moment, what we've got is an annual plan that doesn't have any assumption with regard to shortfalls, which it seems to be already available in the stadium, and that changes, whatever they might be, will take some time. I wouldn't wish to say how long, because it depends on what the changes are. And so I think that we have got to be mindful of the fact that at some point in this process, we are going to have to address how, how we manage a shortfall that we're not entirely sure what it is at the moment. Now, that, that needn't necessarily be managed through arising, through, through a rates contribution. But I think that at some point, probably, there's got to be some understanding for councillors about how it might be managed without doing that. That's maybe not right now, but at some stage in this process.
Yes, you, we, we are, we're at the same time. So at the same time, we're coming back to you with the, with the proposed changes to the operating model of the stadium, the way the whole system is set up, and changes around the way the stadium is run. We will also be coming back to you with suggestions around meeting budget shortfalls, both in the medium and the longer term, that's the intent of this.
Councillor.
Just to further to that, Sue, you, you mentioned that the report will be transparent and as much as possible open to public. There are some things that have, in my view, could cause discomfort, if you like. We've, we've got a, a system now that, that we have a methodology of payment that could, that may not be able to be changed, or could, could have severe repercussions for the, for the city with regards to like certain security payments and that sort of thing. So would that look at that?
Whatever can be made public will be made public. Stuff that is made public, there are hurdles under the official information, under the board, about emissions, and so on, critique in the, the nature justice of individuals and so on, that will be respected.
Can I make it clear that in discussions with Chief Executive, I completely support the intention, intentions in this regard? And my advice was that a review goes further rather than not, not too far. That everything needs to be reviewed, including the way it was set up, the assumptions it was set up on, how and how it's been run. So there will be nothing, I'm not saying will be necessarily made public, if it can't be, but what I'm saying is the review will be totally. But what I'm saying is the review will be totally...
That's fine, but I support that. I'm just cautious that we don't add a role for our own back.
We've got four questions, Your Worship. The first is the very one from the issue raised by Counselor Thompson. It's unclear to me how we can put up consultation and meaningful budget to the community for the year feedback if we don't have faith in that the numbers are approximately we are going to be sitting. So how is it proposed that that be managed?
Yes, I understand that. We have this year's budget and we can see how things are tracking this year. What we don't have at this point is enough rigor in a new budget to enable us to comfortably face the one we currently have. We know there's gonna be a shortfall and we're seeking ways of making sure that we can cover that other than by subjugating till the end of the year and covering it with surplus, you know, through a boat round the table. So until we know how we might change the operating model and the way new structure will be set up and what that means for the budget, it is very difficult for us to, it's impossible. I mean, it's just guesswork and frankly, the last thing we need is more guesswork in the saving budgets.
So in terms of the provisions under the Local Government Act around consultative procedures, there is room for council to make a decision if we have to in that last discussion after hearings and submissions. That might change, effectively introduce new information, doesn't it, at that stage?
I've spoken to all the New Zealanders about this review and told them what we are planning and told them what we're putting into the budget. They are very comfortable with the process.
Just in terms of the content of the review. Two years ago, this council instigated a stadium review and it was undertaken, I think, by staff in conjunction with the Stadium Review Working Party. There were a number of members of our community contributed to that. I think the submissions amounted to the hundreds. Is it proposed that some of the contributions that came through from our community will be considered as part of this new review?
We certainly intend to look at those.
In terms of the review, you've obviously instigated it under your delegation as a Chief Executive. Do you need or would it be helpful to have a council motion that formalises the support of that review at this time?
Certainly do not now.
And finally, there was an issue raised by, I think, the Chair of the WIPO Ecos Community Board this morning pertaining to the Events Fund. My recollection is that when we initiated that fund, it was on the very clear and it was a motion that we're alongside saying that this is a one-year fund, it will be reviewed, it will be monitoring of its impact and that will be recorded back. I understand, or it's my assumption that that will be coming back at some point for our consideration.
Yes, we can certainly tell you how things are going in terms of the expenditure of that fund and what's been used for.
Thank you.
Counselor, thank you.
I support this review. I think there is sort of mounting concern actually in the community as to the level of the subsidy, the rate subsidy for this project and a wholesale review of the management and operation. We've been very well informed by the community. Like Counselor, Heather Shai had noted a question about the $400,000 contribution to the Events Attraction Fund and was wondering when we might hear about how well done that extension. So I take it that that's gonna come through just from the comments of the Chief Executive. Yeah, I support the trust of this.
Counselor Stone.
I think we've done our best as a council over the last four years anyway to support and attempt to see whether what was originally proposed in terms of projections was workable. And I think we have reached that point where it's pretty clear that the original assumptions made on the operating model and the ability to generate a breakeven or small profit, as I think was projected at that time, is, I hate to say it, climate's gone. And I think the review is absolutely necessary. I think there are assumptions made of that original model that will never be achieved and if we continue to live under the belief that they can be achieved, have implications for us that are perhaps beyond just the losses. So, you know, the thing's not going to get better and the review is the only way to deal with the situation. I suppose I'm a pragmatist and don't believe that the end result is going to mean that the rate payers still don't get to fund the stadium. But it would be better to understand exactly what that cost is going to be on an ongoing basis and get that tidied up so that we know, rather than living in an existence where we get surprised every year. So I fully support the review.
Counselor Tom.
I'm still just slightly concerned that we are gonna put a draft annual plan out, a consultation that may not have in it a figure that is potentially substantial. And I just wonder whether we could park that aspect of it. I'd quite like to have a, quite like to have a further chat with staff around how they might be able to, because I think there are some ways that we could handle that that would enable it to be very clear. It would be an interim situation, but it would enable that interim situation to be very clear. And, but I think it needs just a little bit more discussion and we've got a couple of days. So if that's acceptable, we could do that.
What you're suggesting is that we bring this back to the table later and then...
Yes, I think that would be helpful. I think it needs to be on the table, not leaving it on the table.
If it speaks on that one, then that will come.
Do you want a motion at this point? So I'm gonna cut that through.
Could I suggest that it might be more helpful to have a motion that encompassed dissolution as well as a... Otherwise, you may not feel quite so enthusiastic about your motion afterwards.
Yeah, no, it's fine. Yeah, I think you did it right.
So the understanding is that any motion that's brought will be brought at the same time as this comes back to us to discuss the budget.
I just think it's pretty clear that we wrote a motion that does endorse what the Chief Executive has initiated at some point.
Yeah, it's totally fair.
Yeah, so I think we're on it.
We can do that. Right, we'll move on to the next section is property investment 2.45. Counselor Thompson.
A couple of areas and I apologize if these are most, it should have been sent in advance, but I just, I... There is no allowance in here for any sales of surplus property. And I wondered, was that intentional or are we not aspirational?
What's in here is, I hope you'll leave a word for us there. There is a plan for sales of surplus non-strategic properties.
There is definitely a plan for the sale of non-strategic property. We actually have a position description developed and we're just waiting on approval from the executive management team, the employers to develop the sales process, to actually get involved in that process and develop that process and see that process through under my supervision. We have an issue probably, or we did a property review of what we believed were the surplus properties from various departments two and a half years ago. Those are being worked through. Most of those come under issues such as the Reserves Act and the Reserves Act and there is a great component to them on all of those because they can be released. So it's very difficult for us to say when they can be available. And of course, you know, you put sales into a budget, you're never quite sure whether you can actually achieve those sales at the time. Give you an example, the Caladonian, not the Caladonian, the Logan Park proposal to sell sites to Natahu and develop a residential complex for Polytech. Now, that process requires consultation with the public. It requires resource consent for both the subdivision and also for the development. And until those things are completed, it would be wrong for me to put it into the budget, for example, I think, that we expect $2 million from that sale because it may or may not happen. I'm very positive that it will happen and we take very positive view on those things, but I think it would be wrong to put those into the budget at this stage. But going forward, you will see a plan that will come to council for the sale of surplus property and we can look at that stage. Look, my second question is around the, on page 2.51, the cash flow. The net decrease in cash flows, I don't quite understand, probably short, but don't. How are we get to that ongoing negative cash flow?
Karen.
Yes, Your Worship, I can help with that. So on page 2.51, that's the cash flow for the property that's in this. If you go over to page 2.57, you'll see the cash flow for the operational portfolio. So one is quite positive cash flow, that's the operational property, and the other one is...
Counselor Stone.
Counselor Thompson, I ask a couple of questions that I have around the sales. In terms of these surplus properties, the comments that we've made would suggest that they are unwanted operational properties and therefore would not be considered down.
Sorry, I didn't catch that last bit.
So because they're surplus operational property, they would not be covered by our endowed property or property. In other words, when we sell these, the money raised from these may be assigned to debt reduction where endowed property sales can't be.
Indeed, and in fact, we've done that already in properties that we have sold. And we have sold some properties that have been surplus, just a few last year. That money has gone directly against debt.
So you already commented that it's hard to know what these revenue stream could come from. But given that you're employing additional staff member to progress these pieces of property, you must have some quantum in mind that might come from the sale of the surplus properties, i.e. you're investing in something to get from really sale. What is the quantum of potential revenue that will come from these sales?
I had answered that question to Chief Executive and my general manager in terms of, you know, getting the approval to actually employ this person. It would be reasonable to expect over the next two to three years as we look through that process that it would be probably around $5 million from all of those small pieces of property. There's about 150 pieces of property identified. That would be reasonable to expect. Some, you know, it's very hard to put a value on some of these. On top of that, there are large properties that we, well, I identified, I guess, over the last year or so, which didn't come through on that property review. For example, the sale of Logan Park, so there's $2 million there. Natahu have started perhaps buying another portion of that land and there's another $2 million probably coming in there. So it remains, and then of course, on top of that, you have the Caladonian Volcan Club on Anderson's Bay Road, which would be reasonable to expect around $1.5 million. So there's another $5 million that certainly would justify the employment of one person. That person has to be of pretty good calibre because they've got to be able to manage the sales process, also understand all of the local government requirements and be able to deal in the marketplace to achieve this result.
Sales are good for this one. Counselor, I have...
Yes, Your Worship, you referred at the beginning to the fact that I was to raise the issues that Hillary's seen through at the relevant points. So Counselor Kelbert asked me to read, why do we need to allow for $136,000 for property sales? We already employ real estate agents and we have already identified some properties for sale. This seems entirely unnecessary to me. Can we get further information in written form, please? I assume that she's referring to those staff costs on page 2.5 and property management.
My turn. You can't rely on real estate agents to get the best price for properties for a staff, you know?
Well, I assume that she is referring to the $136,000 increase in staff costs on page 2.5. That's my assumption. And her question is, why do we need to allow, well, the first part of the question is why do we need to allow for $136,000 in property sales?
Can I just answer that because I do know the question, yeah. It's not just property sales. You know, you've got 2% increase in staff costs, staff pay with salaries as well. I've taken on the responsibility of another 20 staff in recent months. I think there's tiny increase for that. And then on top of that, we're allowed for a reasonable salary for somebody of a reasonable caliber. Now, answering the question about real estate agents, real estate agents aren't necessarily there to give best deal for us. They're there to give best deal themselves generally. They're only interested in achieving a result. You know, it's probably a little unfair in some cases to say that, but really, they live on commission. So they just want to be, they're not going to achieve the best result. Those real estate agents have to manage and get somebody of a caliber that can manage them to achieve the best result for council.
Counselor, that's enough. I'm interested in, I'm interested in who decides what's surplus and non-strategic and how that process is reported.
I'm bench. What we did in terms of property review, I think some hope is that we interviewed all of the various departments and we went through all of those properties at the time and discussed with them whether there was a need for that property. For example, where you've got a situation in Wastewater where they acquire over a number of years properties for, for example, for a reservoir and they, because they weren't sure of the detail of that, they acquire perhaps more property than they needed or they acquire more property because they have to buy a whole site rather than half a site to achieve what they got. And there's been property like that sitting about where there's an extra bit left over. So that's a decision that we look at and say, well, this seems to us, let our own little bit of extra land, we should sell it. And that's a discussion that goes through a process and any of those sales then go to ELT for final approval.
So there's no reporting to councillors, so?
Not at all. We haven't started the process really, other than one or two small properties, so no.
I just raised them out of because in terms of what's reported and what's not, I think some form of reporting ratio does need to come through this table.
There are some pieces of the scheme that are clearly naturally non-strategic, no S B N. And we will look to those. In terms of things that might be of interest to council, we can happily make a commitment that we will come back and keep council based on the properties that have strategic value or that have non-strategic thinking.
All of mine, thank you.
And we have done that to date with things like the... And we have done that to date with things like the Caladonian and also the Logan Park properties, which are reasonable. A lot of these properties are $100,000, small properties and the likes of. But if it was a park or something, that we would probably put that back through council.
Does such a process include operational decisions by council-owned companies or companies such as the Airport Company, where we have a 50% ownership, in terms of divestment of land?
At this point in time, it doesn't. However, there are discussions underway now that we have a group chief financial officer to explore the links between property, right across the entire family of companies.
The reason for my question must be quite clear because many people know that less unfortunate decisions that were made by the Airport Company historically affected the ownership. Councilor Van Vussen.
Last year, you publicly suggested that significant gains could be made by building a much larger property portfolio. Has, is that still on the cards or has that plan changed for some reason?
I would love to see that happen, but that's my own view from a management perspective. However, because we have a regime where we're not allowed to raise debt at the present time and we must pay that debt, that's on that term.
So until such time as, what, 2021, when we hit our debt target, are you saying it's not really possible to give these significant property gains because there's just no money there to do it?
I probably won't be sitting around waiting until 2021 to put the proposal forward again.
Well, I just wanted to, just in relation to Councilor Bates' question, whether there is perhaps an opportunity for the governance managers to update us on the motion that we moved with regards to property governance and when we might be expecting a report following through on the restructuring of the property sale committee.
My understanding is that we're considering an advisory panel for property debtors, but I'll check you later and then I'll back you up.
Anything else on Councilor's end?
Would it be fair to make the assumption that if Robert was in a position to be able to put to council significant financial benefits that might accrue from developing his property portfolio, bearing in mind the comment you've made not sitting around 2021 to put them forward again, I think it's important that if you do believe that, Robert, that you should put that proposal to council for their consideration. Is that an unclear assumption?
I was certainly discussing that with Chief Executive and, you know, if I guess from the executive board we had to agree, then I'd put it forward. We have actually had a business plan done by professionals together with ourselves with the price of the house to actually promote this, but it's sitting there at the moment on the table.
Because I happen to be one, a councillor of the view, that even though if there is the opportunity here, albeit that you may still have to borrow, but there is a greater return in the long term, then we should certainly be looking at it.
Portfolio itself has, the investment portfolio has a borrowing ratio of around about 15% at the present time. Most investment portfolios of significance, the commercial ones out there, have settled around 20%. And so to maximise their returns without creating too much of a risk. And so that's where I'd like to sit, but you know, that's something that is in the report.
Councilor Thompson?
Well, just in that regard, I just ask whether you see the council as being a property investment company?
I only, I'm employed to run the property business. One of those areas is the property investment portfolio. I was employed to do that. It's part of my job description. And I believe at that current time, that's, unless that changes, then that's my job to do.
To date, Executive leadership team have been very clear. There's no scope for us to borrow another $15 million for property investment.
And I'm very clear on that.
Another option, of course, to give us borrowing equity up to 30% equity to sell half of the properties in the property portfolio, which would mean the main debt would be 30% and not 15. That's not that punishable either. So there's clarity here that borrowing money for property investment until we reach the financial strategy top target of $200 million in debt for this council is highly unlikely to be put to you as a priority.
Thank you. My personal view is that it should never be put to us as a priority because we're not a property investment company that we'll worry about in 10 years' time.
Anything else on property?
Could I just answer Councilor Curtis' question about the lease agency? That was all that they called. The increase in costs to run the lease agency purely relates, and it's not a great, you know, it's a reasonable amount of money, but it's not, it's not a huge amount in relation to what we've seen on the property. For example, you know, we've spent $42 million. Such things as we've got two lifts and the replacement of the maintenance system lift. So therefore, there is an increase in the actual structure of what we pay to companies that run our lifts for us and maintain them. So there's an increase in cost there, which was a need for. On top of that, our insurance was taken up significantly because of the fact that we've added value to the property. So there are those costs that have, the operation costs has gone up. Now, some of those costs will be recoverable from the EBL in terms of running the business there, in terms of the management agreement, which hasn't been finalized yet.
So the cost, I'm trying to find here I was, but the cost that elections in relation to electrical maintenance is definitely lift mechanical.
Well, it's not really maintenance. It's more mechanical, such as, you know, electrical work. We've got a hugely different regime there in terms of the whole electrical system in place. We've spent probably, you know, at least $5 million on electric in the place. You know, there is an increase in cost in just managing those types of things. They're much more, you know, supposedly sophisticated, but they also require more people to come and check on the likes of. We've also had an increase in the cost of the likes of those sorts of things. Mechanical, it's air conditioning as well, which we didn't have before, and those costs.
That's something like the higher of each for electricity, one would expect, would be recruited through the EBL.
That's right, thank you.
Thank you, Bishop.
Yeah, thanks, Robert. Really, this is speaking out of turn. But I wondered what allowance on over modelling that FND has been done for potential future costs and operational capital level? Any rental housing or if this regime, any implemented, either the central government or a local government level?
Well, you haven't, are you talking about the warrant fitness proposal to the central government to have a proposal? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I mean, there are a variety of proposals that are around at various levels. I just kind of regards to our social housing portfolio, whether any of that has been taken into account at this stage.
That hasn't been taken into account, but you can be rest assured that we do manage that portfolio carefully and we do think it's well maintained and we have, you know, we pride ourselves in making sure that this is up to speed as possible. We will be doing things like double glazing in the future, which will help that warrant fitness process. Those costs are there and they will be met over a period specifically within the budget that we have there, which is a rate increase, which does not cost council anything at all. The rent paid for all costs related to those housing units. So we will, we've worked through a process with that and we do have a 10-year maintenance plan for all our property. But it doesn't specifically relate to warrant fitness scenario.
Right, that's all property of the past. Fighting on this section is the report on page 12.5 in our large project, the Neen Gasworks Museum.
Form of a little house cottage in Bramar Street opposite the Gasworks that's been offered to the Gasworks for free. It looks pretty shabby from the outside and when I had a look at it, I thought, no, you wouldn't take it. But when I had a look inside, I discovered it actually was well-built, had good bones, made of good timbers and would actually be quite a good doerapa. And certainly, the last remaining opportunity to get a cottage from the Gasworks era into the Gasworks Museum. The opportunity that we seem to have is simply getting it across the road, which could be anything from five to 10 grand, I understand, and get it parked temporarily in the Gasworks property. I'm wondering, is there any way that we can actually do this that doesn't create any budgetary ruptures in the process? Is it a go, given that it's a bit of a win-win opportunity?
I respect the Gasworks Museum as such and not trying to do the historical, the existing buildings. I'm not sure, I probably the same view from the other side of the market, but I'm not sure whether I have the same view as the leader of this group of feeders. If we don't have money in the budget to actually pay for shifting it across the road, but if I'm instructed to do that and take some money out of, for example, our maintenance budget, then we could do so.
Can I suggest, Councilor, that if you wish to move something in that direction, that could be like an hour or later, that would be an appropriate way to deal with this, if you think that's a...
Right, I would like to move then that we investigate the viability of being able to accept we've got the Bramar Cottage for the Gasworks.
Just to clarify, you're moving that we investigate?
We probably need something more wider than that. You know, one interrupting question. I understand there is a very narrow window of opportunity for this, that the owners don't just knock it down, which is what the other option is. So I understand it is a matter of a small number of weeks, maybe two or three. Which means if you do want to do this, you would need to move a motion that says and that, Robert, and that the property department be instructed to set aside $10,000, up to $10,000 of their maintenance budget in order to pay for a move if it's found to be viable.
Right, well, with that modification, Anne, just your second.
Just a question on around process. I mean, I don't know much about this cottage. I wonder whether it would be, given that we're going to be here for a couple of days, whether it would be appropriate to just ask that this motion or that Councilor Van Vussen consider waiting perhaps until we have the opportunity to question somebody that might have a bit more knowledge about the cottage and its value and elements?
Well, my understanding of it...
Dave Peachey, who's one of the trustees and also deals with historical matters, has it in the report. Sam Bazley, I have that actually on file and just, so there is something there. We're going to have a look at it if you like, if you want me to table that.
Well, I personally would find it quite helpful if we were considering...
Well, can I just say, my understanding of the motion is that it's asking for investigation and on the court, and setting aside $10,000. But only, only if it's found, it'll only be used if it's found to be viable. So what I'm pointing out is that the view to the report, as Peachey's done, will inform the investigation and that's what comes back to us.
But I find it difficult to vote on a motion, putting aside $10,000 for a structure of value of which I'm clear on and the history of which I'm familiar with.
No, but the point I'm making is that the $10,000 is only committed to half of the investigation.
We can bring the report to you so that you can consider it straight after lunch. If you would just like to make this, we'll bring the report, I will bring it to you straight after lunch so that you can look at it. So the cottage, you know, the cottage's history, why the Gasworks Museum people are keen to try and save it, why they're all keen to save it. Bramar's immediately available.
If you do make some note of noting that it is out of the current financial year, this is not an end playing matter. This has been raised in an end playing session, but it would come out of this existing issue, but it's not an end playing, reporting on the end matter. So basically, the question might expect...
In terms of process, this motion can, I'm having, but I would like to second it. I'll second provided someone can assure me that the Gasworks process, she wants the cottage. It will have to come out and, you know, I assume this report, that it will be brought to us today. So it's moved to Councilor Van Vussen, similarly to Councilor Bates and Hope. I think it might on the table until we pick it up. That being the case, we've reached the end of that section. So if you look at your decision sheet, there are three recommendations to be put for each section. In this instance, and that's the written decision sheet is on 6A1. Chief Executive pointed out to me that given that the uncertainty around the study of the budget aspect of this particular section, that it would be prudent to let these recommendations lie and have to the major meeting of the council. So, because they're all quite happy with that, that's the operation process. Well, it actually, not depending from, I'm sorry, so to speak, in that we will be putting these recommendations at the end of each section and then we'll be overarching one at the end. But I'm suggesting we don't put them in this case because they cover something that is still uncertain and Chief Executive's decision will bring back something to us for filling in the missing to enable us to track the service. So in this instance, I won't move anything at all, other than just be on hold. I don't know what that's called in the process, but... Okay, the next section is section three, growing of parts. The first report with regard to this is part of our improvement support program options. We'll do that first. So that is the report from Evan on page 12.7 to 12.16 in the large project. Now, on the first instance, I'll open it up to questions to start on this report.
I think if we start these, I've played, I think, even needs to give around the options.
Thank you, Tony. It just relates to what we're calling option four, which is the last for option C, which is simply programming something starting at the main meeting of nothing sequence and just the last paragraph for option C. The Museum Transport Agency have been having to, Mike Harrison and, cut a long story short, they work on Harrenford Point Row right out at Harrenford Point Village. Cannot be done out of sequence. We are best to do that in the next 18 months. But after that, we could start at the main meeting. So that's a small variation.
So just to clarify that, given what you're saying is that option C is now...
No, option C, if you go to page 511, option C, what's listed as number seven, which is the existing program, would become number one because that's the one that's currently funded, that's currently in our books, that's the one that the NZTA have committed to. And then the rest of the system would come out from... and then the rest of the system would come out from...
So, so, that's clear, so option C actually changes, that's what you're saying?
Yes, the first one would be, all the options would have their Harrenford, that have been done first, possessed, but they've got funding for NZTA to do those things.
Correct, funding is available and they are expecting us to stand by that.
Can I just, if I could, if I did allow it, was that what you wanted to say? Can I just clarify that, function? So in terms of the TAs, absolutely, and sequencing, that's the only area where there's any sensitivity to that?
Correct.
So the reorder of sequencing option is available to council with that exception?
That is correct, we still have a process for the NZTA to justify a spin, but you are correct, that counts better.
Can I just query even advice about the NZTA component? Because my understanding is that the NZTA has been aware of the entire program and had committed to funding it, but there's a three-year funding cycle which, I think it's worthwhile we discover that off first, because it's not what it might explain funding program and any sort of application that can be made to NZTA for any further sequencing, just so you're clear around that.
Commissioner, council, the NZTA, the State Design Project at the moment, they have given endorsement to the strategic that all of that total project, they have endorsed the efficiency of the effectiveness of the solution we're putting in, that re-proposition. The efficiency side of it, so that's here from NZTA that talk about a ranking of HH, or HMM, or HML, which is the funding capital points. The first one is the strategic segment is effectiveness, the last one is efficiency. So they've gone through the first two, and we have to submit project by project, reaching out to the individual projects that we want to get funding for, and that's that. So there is no overall approval, there is an endorsement for part of the approval, the only thing to prove at the moment is here in the report.
So every three years, we've got to go face apply for the next three years of the design statement, and then the NZTA consider that in three-year blocks, is that four there? So if we, whatever program approved would be subject to NZTA approval for the Harrenford Point, that was currently on, in the future would be subject to that three-year funding cycle which we need to go through. But NZTA have approved, have had the overall strategic for the program, but it's still subject to that approval each three-year cycle.
That's right. With everything at the moment, if we decide we want to defer that and do something else, we would need to return that approval and insist that another project approved. Once we've had our six, the whole project approval, that's on the, on the regional end of the map, so there's no guarantee that we can transfer from one project to another.
Hence, prudence of leaving that where it is in terms of sequence.
That's what, let's start where you get back with it this morning, yes.
And just one other point, just on the report, the chair of committee board, and Captain Lee will basically identify this with me as well, concerned that there isn't a listing in the report of the current priority list. Page 10, page 12, nine. The difference between 12, nine, which is set as a part of the renewals funded program, and the current community board priority list is item number two, which is Harrenford Point, and you see this little R upside there, and number seven down the bottom. Now, that little R because the bit that's number two, which is from Weir Road to Howard, the road's falling down, collapsing, seawalls in need of repair, the team have figured out that they can fund that out of a renewals budget. So that's a different funding line from this program. So it's taken that out and see we can do that in the year 2015 out of renewals budget, so that's one change from the community board priorities. And number seven, which is again done under renewals, is a bit of inland road that we think we can fund out of renewals when it's asset condition requires it rather than a list program. So those are the two changes, because the renewals funding, we can use the two big sections from the community board priorities, just to make that clear.
As to top.
If under option C, number seven, has to go back up the top, it's just not clear to me what that does to the timing around, does it move any of those into later years or do they stay as you've got them there in terms of the program?
Everything would move one year.
One year, okay. Second question is, if the, if there is changes as has been signaled to the subsidy component, and I'm not entirely clear as to when that might kick in, but would that have any financial impact on how we ordered things? In other words, a reduced financial subsidy on a larger sum of money would have more impact than a reduced financial subsidy on a smaller sum of money? And I'm just trying, I'm just trying to understand whether there is any, any implication there that we should be aware of.
So it means just front-loading, the highest...
Well, I'm trying not to be quite that obvious, but I mean, is there, if there is a, if there's a higher cost component, and some of these cost more than others, obviously, whether there is any logic in, which I accept may well be overridden by other issues, but is there any logic from a financial perspective in de-risking things by bringing some elements forward because 50% or 60% of that is, whatever the hell the subsidy is, is quite a lot?
Certainly, the fact that New Zealand Transport Agency are reviewing funding assistance rates, not just for this project, but all road operations, it will clearly have an impact on council and Mike Harrison is probably best to put further on that if maybe. We do our current works, if you're looking at the current progress program, we stick to what we've got, depending on the renewals funding, actually there's an idea that might have, but what's really good, I don't think the changing segments would really have any emotional impact, there's nothing to be gained by bringing some sections forward, so I wouldn't get that taped, any of the decisions that make in today's discussion.
And last question, I'm going to try to slide it instead of them, I think it did get canvas previously, but if we stick to the current format, it strikes me that we will be doing the high priority areas in terms of transits view in the front end of the program. Does that increase the risk that filling in the gaps later may be seen as strategically less important, or does the fact that they have assessed the whole thing as a project mean that they are unlikely to turn, be able to say, well, hang on, that last bit going from Bird's Point to, sorry, to McCandrie Bay, is no longer, yeah, we wouldn't support it or we wouldn't subsidize it?
There is, there is a situation where with NZTA stretching their financial compensation, as they need to make some tough choices. I talked before about the ranking of the project going up. At the moment, funding comes to an HMM project, so that's a high strategic, medium effectiveness and medium efficiency, so at that level, that's a capital point. Three years ago, there was an HML, it may well be it gets to an HML. So as it goes up means that further out, we expect greater risk of not being across the bar for a commencement of the process.
Thank you, the text.
A couple of things, first, just following the richest question around section seven, totally, you see the beginning of the section in the stretch of road, but it's been kind of like there's like weather issues around seawall, which means it needs to go at front. Does that, does that mean only relate to a very small part of that section?
So the section seven, showing version of the map, it goes to 1213, 1213 shows the map.
Yep.
Okay, the bit we're referring to is showing seven part, that's inland bit from where the yellow is, which has been lined up. There was a small section, seawall work at the...
So that's the path that is causing the problems, which means that we need to move it forward?
No, our problems are further towards Harrenford Point, the, again, the same plan that Tony was just talking to, inland section, where we, the last 300 odd meters, where we do have seawall work, seawalls in pretty reasonable condition, maintenance requirements are not particularly excessive. It's, again, it's our program for, first gap offering brought out at Harrenford Point in South East, where we've got some concerns.
Sorry, I've got myself mentally confused with numbering of seven differently on the map.
Yeah, we can change it, but just like the other times.
Yeah, I'll explain that. So the question of safety, which has been raised by a number of people, obviously, there is a focus, there is a need to focus on safety around schools and the villages, but as I recall, one of the maps that we previously considered was the crash statistics along the entire stretch of road, which indicated that there were certain areas of that road outside of townships which once had a far higher crash rate than other areas, is that right?
Yes, that is correct. To go right back to the reason for the project as a whole, it was to address the high crash statistics along Harrenford Point Road and Lord Velero, the fact we've got more than cycling benefits as well, it's obviously a common sense and good thinking. There are, just, I can't quite copy of the plan you just mentioned about crash statistics, over the last five years, this is a high number between Dunedin and McCandrie Bay and also the equivalent, simply high number in the Portobay and Portobello areas, the rest of Portobello and Harrenford Road are relatively minor, there's no excellence, good excellence, of course, but the numbers are quite different.
Looking at the map on page 1213, the areas that have a high number of crash deaths, four and five, and number three, zero.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. The NZTA co-investment rate indications, I assume that our budgets have been drafted on the basis of a, in a, assumes it's the C subsidy, which is indications are as likely to drop? Does that mean that we will have to, if we wish to proceed with this project within the current budgeted timeframe, we might need to increase our investment from the DCC end to balance the investment, reduce the investment rate?
Through the chair, yes, the indications from the financial assistance rate review is that there will be a change. There's two factors, that they are looking at the base fire rate against the construction fire rate. It is fair to say that both are going to change, it is much likely the construction fire rate, now that is a 10% increase, 10% over the base fire, that is much likely to disappear, and if I may survive against that, I'd say that then it really stages, there's an opportunity for transition of the other fire rate to change, but I would expect that the construction fire rate must be an easy cutoff in that moment, by soon rather than later. So yes, we are getting 66% at the moment, it's going to come down to, it could be as low as 49%, and that's very real, but I can say for this particular project, our budget trend in the budget has anticipated a 15% subsidy.
Counselor White.
Thank you, Commissioner. Going through the different maps, what I'm looking at is the, essentially, box all of McCandrie Bay, which is Bird's Proctor and Rosal Rose, aren't really scheduled for 2018, 19. Is there any way, am I correct in assuming that?
That is correct, and that's the, probably the point of today's discussion, is that is everyone comfortable with that sort of timing, that section, clearly it's got large demand, just a really population base, but it's currently around priorities.
But essentially, it would be the most active part when built?
From traffic.
Cyclists and community?
Yes, just for the sheer commuter demand. Yes, the track volumes are in the order of, you know, when for the track models, I've thought that's dangerous, but they quite like to, they, McCandrie Island, they're recently dropped off as expected.
Yes, you're right, because what you're referring to is the current proposed sequencing, and so the other options provide opportunities you can see for you to consider.
Look at the NZTA funding, if for some reason the council decided, do they have the opportunity to move any of the cycling network within the city and transfer any of that NZTA funding across to the, around the harbour?
Through the chair, no, that doesn't transfer, the way it's currently allocated is on an activity class basis, cycling is, the cycling funding is separately from road improvements, the pension budget is funded from a road improvement because the majority of benefits, safety improvements for the traffic rather than cycling benefits, and that's the way they calculate, safety is a force of both. The cycling budget is totally separate and NZTA cannot cross, with the current position from the government policy statement, they can't swap between.
And finally, is there any other funding mechanisms that we can to speed this process up? So for example, the New Zealand Tourism Cycling Networks or some central government funding pool, written up there?
Not that we're aware of.
Counselor Lou, yeah, but I've just got a question around the fact that we have community boards here this morning, and they've clearly stated the options, the current option, the option that's been, who we've put in process, and I'm just wondering, what is the main goal for wanting to change, is that, I just haven't quite understood a significant reason to the path and what the community board and what the people have been saying, the difference and what's the main thing? So what does the sum up, if you're not seeing, but so, yeah, what's the main reason for change, approach something different?
Can I jump in there, and I had a discussion with Evan about this earlier, and ask Evan and Tony, what criteria are applied in order to decide what order to do things?
Yeah, well, I guess could I just also add a question, as if we, if we have community boards and we give them responsibilities, and then when they make a decision, we give them, or actually we're making a better decision or a different decision, we need to have a good reason why we're going to change.
Except that all of this isn't in the community board area, a good portion of this is outside the community board area. Evan?
Thank you, the, our tier, it's not my comment, I'm really, about the addressing the accident numbers, you know, there's a pattern to group fox box for accidents, we would consider the population bases, the population centers, and they have an impact, but demand, the other...
we have an impact, um, but demand, uh, the other, uh, factor is connectivity, is that, um, that we have a project that rolls out in, in a logical fashion, that, that road users, you know, um, uh, drivers or pedestrians or cyclists, uh, have some consistency and it doesn't, uh, we, we don't have a bit of a piecemeal approach, so we try and have some sanity check on, on, on a logical, uh, roll out of, um, how the project as a whole fits together, rather than having gaps, uh, until quite late in the process. So that's the base of criteria. Um, an ordinary project, you, there are, you can cut it in multiple ways, uh, and this is what we're seeing to the feedback on, the council is about, um, like, if I can touch on it, do we have a lot of help, uh, or do we have that type to really drill down and see if we, um, do need to make a change?
Have you, have you done, get a question? You're right, I, 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 that's, I was after, I think that what underli, what underlaying your question was what criteria being applied, or we need to apply, and what the, in terms of why they've got some options for sequencing, but you've often asked another question.
Well, I guess, I guess probably the question I would say is, why did you approve or what did you allow a program to get brought where it wasn't in sequence in the first? Uh, if that's the reason for change?
Can I find that? Can I clear, it wasn't, it was a council decision, in accordance with the community board priorities to have the current sequencing. So, I'll bring back, because we were asked to bring back, was a, a potential alternative sequencing that the council, that you as a council will consider. The criteria, um, I think, and, um, the Chair of Community would cover this off, who their concern was about the connectivity and the, and the safety of children getting to school in the build-up areas, that's why McCandrie Bay was one of the first areas done. Um, so there's that safety of those build-up community areas. There are, the safety at, um, at Harrington Point, um, there's tourism, there's connectivity between various areas, there's a range of different criteria. And the sequence that we've got in the census is because of a decision around what is the highest priority of those criteria. What you need to do is to make some judgment call, and whether you agree with the current sequencing or whether there's a change. Thanks.
Counselor, oh, well, that's Counselor P.
Thank you, Yourship. Uh, so, at the point, we're still in the question time, right? Yeah, yeah, I, I have some comments to make. Um, I'm, but just, uh, a couple of, uh, some of them have been answered already, but just, uh, on the findings, um, I'm trying to reconcile the, and I know the numbers are sort of going up on the year and landing a little bit, uh, and, you know, the three year EZTA, um, reviews are going to maybe change things, but, um, could we reconcile the figures that you see in, um, in the report? Are the figures at three, four? Back to you, three, four. So about halfway down that list, you see the, and Port of Valley and the Point improvements option. So, so there's some inflation going on here to get the right of these other figures that we see on the report, is it? Or what, what's going on?
That is correct. Uh, the figures that you see in, uh, one, two, four, with the normal, uh, presentation on that, to many, you should, uh, of future routes, um, the numbers in the report, you will find, um, that they are inflated, that there's inflation thirty percent, so if they are three, which is why there's a difference. They start from, um, you will see the correlation between the numbers, go on, three, four, you'll see the, um-
Uh, and just in terms of our project, so Rowan and the councillors will recall, there has been, uh, the years of investigation of the erosion, which is quite serious for the residents, uh, in a groin project, it's, it's complicated. And, uh, I'd just like to ask, uh, how the words are even pointed on, on the road widening cycle wave, uh, would, would, would actually mesh with the, with the groin project? That, is there going to be any issue at any point?
Uh, we, uh, well, we are the, um, proposed groin at, uh, Toroni, uh, we've talked to our park department about that and how it's progressing. Um, they, our road widening work in the groin, um, they, uh, from a design perspective, they complement and, and dovetail in, no problems, uh, they can be done at different times, uh, and they'll clip in, um, in a relatively straightforward manner, uh, so they're not dependent on each other, but they, at the end of the day, they, um, they, they will pay our side together.
So which, which would need, ideally, which would happen first?
Uh, I'm not a, uh, marine engineer, so I'd probably best not comment on that. Um, I have no preference, um, but I'm told to, uh, the road widening, uh, in so be it, uh, that's, um, at this stage, uh, it's likely that the road widening will be first.
Can I just refer, uh, on the basis of that question, that groin and that bit of road widening is in the stretch of road that is prioritized first?
That is correct.
Right. So that is why Mike was returning to moving the change to option C.
Uh, correct, so it's first cab offering, um, regardless.
That's the best.
Well, I don't really want much to do, a couple of questions, I, I guess the nature of this issue is such a, whatever proposals are on this paper, there'll be substantial options, you can, uh, to have a plan process, so we will be revising it again. Um, but if you were to apply the safety and volume criteria, um, it's no doubt in your mind that the sequential from short stretch out, um, from vertical would be the preferred option in terms of those criteria.
And simply in terms of, uh, that criteria, um, the answer would be yes.
Okay, thank you. The second thing is in respect of, um, the, uh, reservations you clearly have, uh, that clearly exist about ongoing levels of funding from EZTA and reductions and potential reductions of funding. Is there any logic to sequencing the work, uh, in respect to doing the lesser rated work first, so that higher rated work still has an increased chance of attracting the funding? Is that clear what I meant?
Uh, yes, it is, and, um, again, Mike has done a whole lot of homework on that, um, the proposal to do the, uh, the word right out of Harrington Point Village first, um, does address that, um, it has a relatively low cost, but EZTA endorse it, um, so that's, um, a plus, and we're thankful for that. The other risky sites are the ones which, uh, Mike has allocated renewal funding to, so those are the ones which were probably at risk of, of not-
So taking them out of the equation.
Correct, so, yeah, Mike has done a really good job to, to minimize our exposure and that regard.
Thank you.
Counselor State. You're right. Counselor Thompson.
Just, I'm still just slightly confused around the safety aspects. Um, we've, we've highlighted to us, um, the concern, I understand, concern around Broad Bay, um, Port of Mallow and children getting to school, that kind of thing. But in terms of the actual, um, uh, safety stats, if you were just making this decision based on, um, risk, uh, where would you start? Thanks.
Mr. P.
Uh, well, no, I'm talking, I mean, if somebody gets killed, whether they're on a bike, in a car, or walking, they're still just a dead, so I'm, I'm kind of, I, I want to know where the greatest risk is.
From purely statistical point of view, the biggest risk is between Dunedin and McCandrie Bay.
So we're talking about a accident waiting to happen? It's more likely to be waiting to happen there than somewhere else?
Uh, that would be correct, that's not to, um, disregard the risk from the Port of Bay, Port of Valley, but, um, that is the highest.
I'm just-
That is the highest risk, yes, Dunedin and McCandrie Bay.
Counselor, uh, my, Chris, can I? Counselor Lou? Thank you, it seems to me, sorry, I was making a comment first, the nice question, it seems to me that the outcome we're after today is the one we're not going to put until ten years down the track. Everyone would be satisfied ten, for ten years' time. So with them in mind, the two hotspots, uh, or the areas of the current plan, four and five, and also six, where the accidents are occurring, everyone would be there.
Which, which four, by?
All right, if we go to plan, it's on the plan, plan, I'm talking to, I'm referring to, uh, taking four and five and sections six and three, where, or maybe just three, where the accident-
Oh, boy, God, you go up there all the time.
All I was going to say is that if the issue is around safety, why not have a reduced, uh, speed restriction, this is sort of aimed around smoke at home, uh, a reduced speed restriction for the life of the, the project? If we stuck with the current program and, and it's been canvassed by the community board over many years and it has been buying, uh, and if the, those other sections where high risk, at the end of risk, uh, uh, have, have a reduced speed limit on those for the period of time until we complete the peninsula road, that may be a win-win for everyone involved. Lots of councils here can tell you three reasons why people crash. One is drivers, two is something wrong with their vehicle, and number three is something wrong with the driving conditions. So if you, if you reduce the risk of a crash by reducing the speed, surely that would be a way to mitigate the concerns that we're having a discussion around. As Counselor Thompson's saying, you know, if you only just focus on safety, you would do four, five, and three first. Um, but the problem we've got is that, um, we, we run the risk of, um, if I'm in EZTA, other than section one, the last section closest to the, uh, the end of the road. But if we start tampering with the other priorities, we will still need to convince them to get it over the line for the funding, coming back to Mike Harrison's point about the, the criteria, the, the HML stuff. So all I'm saying is that at this point in time, if we were to confirm the current program and we know in the next twelve months, the only piece that we dealt with will be the section one, the last section, and that the balance can still be considered over the next twelve months and consideration we give to the speaker, and I'll look at areas where there are hotspots currently. Do you have a question? I didn't ask a question, have you thought about that option, Evan? It's probably a question for Ron Minna, but Evan, I'm sure can answer it.
Yes, I'll, um, I will have to ask Ron Minna to, to comment on that. You're well aware of that, that has been a, a large spin-up review of the peninsula area, is, is a trial that Ron has been implemented, um, but, uh, in my response, we'll have to, you know, get some significant input from Ron Minna to see if that's viable or not.
So, I have a real question, could that be done between the other meeting and the plan? Yes.
Counselor, so could I just, um, just to add to that, rather coming back later, could, could, but part of the psychology of that is also around where you are most likely to get people observing a lower speaker, and whether that is in fact in Broad Bay and Port of Mallow, or in the stretch between Burn's Point and McCandrie Bay? I know psychologically which one I think is the correct answer, but you might want to put that as part of the question.
Just, I'd say, if Eric talks about what has been done on the, uh, safety of that bit of the road and has been worked on around some of the sharp corners and street treatments to try and reduce the, the, the crashes, previously also being told that as soon as the Mac Bay area, where it's been done, the crash rate has been reduced as a result of safety improvements. So you should, you look at a speed limit reduction, but there's been a lot of work done on the peninsula around seeing speed limits already, and we've worked on that bit, which is, uh, between four and, on four and five, around some of the corners, signage, and street treatment to try and reduce the crash rate already.
Okay, Counselor Matt Tatch, I understand you want to channel Counselor Keller.
Yeah, sorry, I have two questions from Counselor Howard, and I'm not sure whether they need to be rhetorical when they're actually need to question, so I'll read them anyway. Um, she says the background page, twelve point eight describes this as targeted to address the high accident rate, yet there has been no consultation with the AA, question mark, can we ask for some, question mark? And the second one is, what did those consulted, broadly speaking, say? Could we know, please, question mark? So, um, I've read them. Okay.
If the, uh, the authorization were not consulted, uh, specifically for this project, however, um, with Sarah and her team, the transportation planning team, they've had a lot of discussions with the AA on, um, roads, APMs, cycle safety, uh, their, their responses, anything we can do to, uh, um, make the road safe for those vulnerable users, be it pedestrians or cyclists, being, they're all for it. And so what was the second question?
The second one was around, um, what did those consulted say, broadly speaking? Can we know, please?
Who, who speaks to that? What, do you know who she's talking about in terms of this?
I'm sure of that.
Is this consultant in terms of the listener? Well, I understand what you're reading out was that was regarding state, safety statistics, or the accident statistics. So I think that would be interesting, I think what would be an answer would be, who, who holds that, who do we consult to find out about? That isn't the, that isn't the AA.
I think perhaps it's something that maybe she should email through to the relevant staff, because it strikes me that it's, um, a number of different submissions that she's after.
Right. That's all the quick, Counselor.
If we reduce the speed limit on the, um, at McCandrie Bay for safety aspect, does that take away, if we reduce the accident number, does it take away our criteria for funding for EZTA? If we've got that restriction in place, you know, the next five years, reduce your accidents by fifty percent, does that take away our chance of funding? What about that?
Uh-
Put the speed up in the air, Tim.
Um, that's a good question. Uh, no, I think, uh, the, oh, my thought, uh, the EZTA would support us to agree temporary initiatives to bring, uh, the accident rates down until we had, um, the project completed. And, and I don't think it would affect the funding.
Um, right, that's the, everyone's got quick, quick, Counselor.
So I'd just like to, to make a brief comment regarding vehicle speeds generally and the assumption that the moderate vehicle speed will always produce accidents. If you look at the safest roads in the world, they're in Germany, and some of those roads have no vehicle speed limit on them at all. What the Germans have done very successfully is they've identified speeds that are appropriate for the conditions. If you do more than fifteen kilometers an hour outside a school, for instance, they've invariably got a camera there and it's very expensive, and I know it from personal experience. Um, so just the, this idea that we're always going to, uh, reduce accidents by lowering speed or even reduce the severity of them, uh, don't underestimate the frustration potential of having to drive too slowly in an area that doesn't really warrant it. Uh, I think what we need to look at is, get the safest outcome, you need to have the most appropriate speed for the condition of the road.
Okay, let's look at the, oh, Counselor's-
Yeah, just, just on the, on what we're doing here this morning, the, um, the, I'm aware that, uh, the Taga Peninsula Community Board, um, going to put in a submission with regards to this decision, and we're going to make a decision on our draft end plan in July, and I'm just wondering if we make any sort of, are we go, are we going to make a decision on this this morning? Because my preference would be to leave it as it is until such time as we hear the submission from the, uh, Taga Peninsula Community Board, otherwise, um, you know, we're going to go around in circles again once we, once we hear what they've got to say.
I think the, let's talk to the context of this. Part, the part of the drive, um, for looking at change in the sequencing was a series of submissions that we got last year. We got quite a number, and as I mentioned to Counselor Lord, part of that is because, and, and the reason that some of those are also between the board, is that this, um, the Port of Mallow route runs, that is through, that is not, completely encompassed in the community board area, so there's a whole lot of people in- So there's a whole lot of people in the community with a very considerable interest in the sequence and who do not live in the community board area. That's the first, that's, so that's the context. That's why it's been looked at again. My understanding is that we will agree something today, whether it's a status quo or something different, to put into the annual plan for consultation. And everyone will be able to sit in on that, including the community board. So there's nothing completely proper for us to either leave the status quo in or put in something else that based on the criteria that even outlined, or some of the sequence that even outlined, we felt better, better achieve the aims of the trial. I'm happy to move, I mean, some have moved, something.
Well, I'm quite happy, well, I'd be prepared to move that we leave the status quo. Because if we change it, then we've got the status quo that some people have been considering. We're going to change it, we're going to have a debate about that. And then we could all be influenced by what the community board is saying and indeed others. So my own, we believe it as it is. I'm prepared to move that.
I'd second that. I won't necessarily agree with it in three months' time, but I think it's the right way to go within the meantime.
I, I'm with Richard. I don't necessarily agree with it, but I think it's a common sense way to approach it.
So picking up on the comment that councillor Victor Pope made earlier, we'll be making the substantive decision on this in June, May and June. So you're moving that the basis for that, and we'll have this whole discussion again, that's fine. I'm sure it's an important matter. The basis for making that call in June will be the status quo. It's been moved, councillor Zett, senior councillor Thompson, I'll open it up for discussion. So councillor, or do you want to say, sorry, John, do you?
No, I'm quite, I'm quite happy to agree with that. I mean, essentially what it means is we're going to have more information to make a common position on. That's really why I'm sticking here.
Councillor, I have a question just before the debate starts. In terms of putting out our annual plan for consultation, does this resolution mean that in fact we don't consult on anything because we're sticking with the status quo? And if so, is that what we actually want to do? Because if you put in the status quo, then the community board doesn't have to consult at all because what we're proposing is staying with the current order. Or do we actually wish our community through the process to actually split so that we can get a balance of opinion to make a decision on safety? My question is, does this withdraw this item from a defined paragraph in the consultation or not? Because that's not simple.
Or do you want a resolution that says you support a longstanding with the status quo, but we see community feedback on the preferences between the status quo and option C?
Further define that by pointing out that if we stay with the status quo, basically what we're saying is that as a council, we prefer that, but we are open to consultation on it. Now, my sense is that some of the table would like to consider alternatives and would like to know what the community felt about the alternative. If we go with the status quo, I'm just textualizing. Then the community board, as you say, might feel, well, they're not wanting to change anything and we don't have to submit whatever. So it's been moved, it's been submitted. I'll leave it open now to the discussion and then we can, councillor Thompson.
Can I, I understand that it's entirely of our concern, but just flick it around for a second. If we change it, are we signaling to those like spokes or others who have argued for a change? Now, they don't need to put a submission in because we decided to go that way. I think all I, the reason I support this is, is I muddled in my thinking and it gives me more time to stay muddled and work it out. Secondly, I just can't see the point in having the whole debate twice when it's quite clear that we're going to get a significant amount of feedback. So why not have the debate once when we've got all that feedback? And if the concern, and I acknowledge the concern that we might be signaling to one or other group that they don't need to participate in this because it's all done and dusted, then, then okay, perhaps we could amend it slightly to say that, that the council determined to leave the status quo in the annual plan, but signaled clearly that it wished to receive views on this and maybe option C is probably where the alternative lies. And that would then clearly signal to both parties. So I would be happy to, if John was, just to amend the motion slightly to, to make something up.
I think this is a very good idea. John, councillor Thompson suggested that the motion be amended to make it very clear that council is seeking feedback on the options in general. In that way, we're not incentivising anyone to believe that it's going to stay the same sort of thing.
Yeah, well, I mean, as Richard has already pointed out, I mean, you either, you could get one group and say, hey, it's going to stay the same.
We're not wishing that, we're talking about the wording of the motion.
Yeah, okay. I might have the chance of it.
Good. Well, I'm not sure that the panel is exactly what the motion.
Well, could we just, could John and I work something out just over lunch and we just put it up? Because it must be getting close to lunchtime.
Well, we have, we've got problems.
Well, if the wording could be changed to maximise the interest in looking at the options, then by all means do so. Like Richard, I haven't got the words in my mind, but.
Could I suggest you and councillor Thompson confer whilst the discussion is going on with regard to some appropriate work?
Councillor.
So I just want to clarify, because I think when you talk about the status quo, you're thinking option A.
No, the status quo, as I understand it, is the, is the sequence that was agreed and recommended by the community board and adopted by council some time ago. It's not specifically set out here.
Well, we've already had a comment that option A is the status quo.
No, it's fine. Can I clarify? Can I clarify? On page 12.9, it supposedly suggested slight modification to the status quo. A slight modification being that the Weir Road, that being funded out of renewals. And the movement of number seven to the end. So the status quo isn't what's shown in 12.9. It's a different sequence, as I understand it, as well.
Okay, so, great. So you, just to clarify, it's an enhanced status quo in that some of the funding comes from the renewals budget rather than from NZTA?
Yes, that's right. And certainly in terms of that Weir Road, the tire wheel drive, if we can fund that in the 2015 year out of renewals, which is duty and we wouldn't, that would make sense. We get it done faster, out of renewals funding. So in terms of, I was going to ask a question, what is the status quo? Is it what we have on 12.9 or is it the current community board program which is slightly different and doesn't make use of it because it's funded in the same way?
Can I take the opportunity to ask the chair of the community board, would you like to come, Chris?
I think we've got a little confusion about.
Well, I just want to clarify. Basically, the, on our 12.9, the sequence is as was originally agreed or written by the community board with the enhancements of bringing some things forward because we can do them out of renewals. So I, what I'm asking you is, the community board is aware of that and that is what you're wishing us to stick to.
Well, just last time, is this 12.9? This is what the meeting was.
Yes.
The first MAC, which is the only one in the country.
Well, the sequence is on page 12.9, that chapter, top of the page.
Right, okay. So that first MAC, yes, when I, when I was talking, when I was talking about the current program, I was referring to one of those tweets to get that work done. So yes, we're.
Appreciate you clarifying. Okay.
Well, I might make some comments here. I have been conceding this just before Christmas that the community board will have an opportunity to do what we are doing here in session. This is a complicated task and requires a lot of knowledge as well. And I just sort of feel that the board's been caught on a half year. It doesn't meet until next week. So I think this is repeated in councillor Zett's comments too. Just to clarify something about where the board boundary is. And it's only about 300 to 400 meters off the MAC from where you see those blue, yellow lines. Just past, just past the water. So I don't think a good caution on the, right? Where's the book under? Boundary is.
You can go down.
1230 meters. We'll walk it up there to see where you are.
Yes, councillor Peter is correct. The boundary is not at far enough that first section.
Which section?
Oh, fourth section.
A fraction into the clue.
Yes, it's in the order of 300 meters.
City Y is outside. The yellow is already that wide.
It's an, that's an intended city boundary.
So we're at our main point to see it stop.
So about 300 meters in that blue section.
Right. So we're nearly 30 kilometers. We're talking about this little length of over 300 or 400 meters is in the community board area. So, yeah, so, I mean, there are just a couple of things I want to say. Many of us will have a session on when we come back in terms of the issues here. In terms of, we heard a bit about the efficiency and the number of vehicles on the road. And those of you who know the road will know that, you know, the fastest that is from Weir Point to Leth Valley with lots of straight areas that you don't see further on and much more windy. I have an issue with the speed limit kind of suggestions of going down to 60 or 50 along there. Already the council, over my 20 years of driving that road, have made quite a few changes and have extended the 50 that far, the come down 70 that far, was 100 when I started driving it. And things have changed. And I think we've got, I've got to a point now, I'm sure Chris will agree, where we're at a kind of a good place in terms of speed limits and driver behaviour. Certainly you can attest that because of the populations at McCandrie Bay and Company Bay that there are higher traffic flows, abuses out that far. But beyond there, I suggest that the most of the people are living there. And most of the people that have had to deal with the one road, I've had people arrive and nervous wrecks at my place because they had, you know, so close to the water. There are a lot of people that I'm sure of the road and driving on the wrong side from the point of view anyway. So those are major safety considerations, I think. The, in terms of the crash history, we're talking about a very similar situation between Burns Point to Leth Valley and that way to Leth Valley on to Portobello. Similar sort of statistics. And most of us who live out there would, so that's, they're called to our own knowledge. Just in terms of the NZTA, I'm sort of, you know, I'm pleased to get the information from Mike and even about this and, but I still think there are some quite good question marks over it. If you juggle around with this too much, we could be, we could be threatening in terms of, or extending completion date. There is one project out there I want to bring to your attention. It's the green bikes that Glenfell actually, Taker Peninsula plus, have launched. I rode one the other day. Makes bike riding a bit like motorcycling in some ways because it's electric motor, electric boost, push buttons and go uphill, no problem. They are going to watch this project. So it's a great tourist initiative, a great green showcase that they're trying to do here as well. Where are those, they going? Are they going to turn left and come back in? Are they even on those bikes or they're going to turn right? They're going to turn right. And they'll go into Broad Bay or they'll pass Company Bay into Broad Bay and Portobello and hopefully the tire wheel head itself. Because they could easily do it with this electric boost on. And they have, well, I saw about 15 bikes there, I think that's about what they're aiming for. So that would, that would be an incentive to actually complete those areas before the area between Burns Point and Portobello. Just finally, because it sounded like I am making a case when we come back to this. But I would, and I'm pleased to see we're thinking of reinserting the status quo. This is a history. The community board, which was forced upon the council by the local government commission in 2003, the people out there were saying, you know, you would need a community board. The council didn't think so. The local government commission said, you will do one because of the tourism aspect, because of how big that is in terms of massive contributions to the economy of the city. $100 million plus, as Chris, yeah, he has told us, a year in terms of nature. And so the status quo, whether it's taken or not, I understand the status quo different from my option A by a little portion of the road, I'm saying, is it pure, pure numbers? But anyway, if we go back to status quo, at least that's in the mix, that's what we, you know, what's good. What's missing from here is, is, I think, is an understanding of just how that status quo should prevail in this discussion. So I mean, I'll leave it there because I think I've exhausted my, my issues and.
Councillor MacTach.
I have some comments that I need to read first from councillor Kelvin, your worship. She says, according to the road in Harrington Point cycleway walkway, I love the idea of having a walkway cycleway along the harbour towards Portobello. The costs I report in the OT is likely to be subsidized to around 85%. Not sure if I can find. I understand from Tony Avery that on average it is likely to be around 50%. I support consulting on options B and C. I'm also not against consulting on A. I support providing information to the public by showing which pieces would be done each year, including describing the pieces in such a way people can know what piece is to say Chalice Point, mainly to McCandrie Bay, like, I think she means rather than the streets, so that it's clearer for people. The 10-year program needs to show for each option the total cost, the subsidy provided by NZTA, and the balance to be funded by rate payers. Also, how it is to be funded, e.g. out of this year's rates or by borrowing, and the cost of interest if so. Also, we need to know what risks there are of choosing different options, e.g. if any of the NZTA funding is at risk. So that's councillor Kelvin. And I'd just like to just make a couple of points. I endorse the approach that we're taking. I think that it is critical that the community board need to have an opportunity to initiate discussions with the community about this. And I think that this gives them the opportunity to do so. I do think that we did hear clearly from some viewers of our community, and not necessarily peninsula residents, but and I think that does need to be taken into account that they would like other options looked into by council. So I think it is in terms of, for us to give us, give the community an opportunity to reflect on it. But from my perspective, I think that there would need to be fairly compelling reasons why we would change a commitment that council has made to this community some time ago. With that in mind, and with in mind the, the need for this to be is based, the discussion is based in fact as it can be, I think it's critical that information that perhaps wasn't included in this report be made available to the public during the consultation phase. If we're saying that there are three main reasons why we would choose an approach, accident numbers, population centers, and connectivity, I can only see one of those things, which is the connectivity clearly illustrated on the maps that we have, with the numbering and the sequencing and the bits that have already been done, so people can see that. But for people who aren't perhaps as familiar with the peninsula as some of us, having marked on the population. um, having marked on the population centres and perhaps the schools, um, I think would be really helpful and also the crash statistics because I think when that, when we were considering submissions, that was one of the key factors that made us think, well, maybe there is a need for the, the community to have another conversation about this was those compelling crash statistic numbers. So, um, those would be, I endorse what's up here, but I think that if there's any way that within the consultation materials, we can also include crash statistics, population centres and schools, I think that would be really helpful.
Yes, and, uh, very good speakers. Um, well, my part, I support this motion, um, but I would reiterate, uh, to a certain extent, comments of Councilor McTavish in putting this before the public. And this is not merely the criticism of this report, but in putting this before the public, we have to make it clearer and more easily understood what the choices are. Um, this is a little hard to follow because each map, because, because the numbers are sequence numbers, it's difficult to know which portion of road you're talking about. So, and I don't have the answer necessarily, but I think it's important that we make it very clear what the pieces of road are and also very clear what the criteria are and I endorse, um, Councilor McTavish's comments about the statistics that back up those criteria. Um, I think that if I'm struggling to get my head around, uh, what, if I prioritise it according to those criteria, I'm struggling to get my head around whether that's one of these options or not. So it, it is not easy to understand, so that has to be made clear for the public, uh, in, in this, in the consultation. Councilor Seag, would you like to...
Well, yeah, the, the, the resolution's changed and it's sort of all embracing this a little nebulousness. It's a bit pushy-washy if you like, uh, and I guess my reasons could very well for supporting this resolution might have changed since I, since I first did it. But, um, I've, and I'd, I'd rather be, you know, council was far more positive about sending, um, a message out to the community board and their draft annual plan. However, we do need to listen to what the community board's got to say. Uh, we do need to get some more feedback from those people who, if there were strong submissions last year saying it should be changed. And then as Councilor McTavish has said, there's a, there's a, a safety aspect that, that I think we have to look at before we make our decision and that's, that's been enhanced since the days of the status quo, uh, because there's a lot more traffic on the road these days, so I'd like to, I'd like to see where that stands. So I, I just urge councillors to support it, although as I said, we're not going to give you this.
Okay, we're going to put it below as a paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Okay. Um, the report we have on our, um, agenda paper, there's, I don't know if the sort of, since she has a central city paving project, that's it, that is sixteen one. And I think it might be more in the hot seat for this one.
Your Worship, yes, I am.
Could you give me a reaction?
Okay, my colleagues are sitting behind you, we support.
Hecking you up. Okay. Um, councillors, um, I'll open it up for questions in the first instance. Captain Linn.
I suppose the obvious one, the obvious one, Your Worship, is that clearly from a health and safety review, you are still quite an adequate budget now with the deals that you need, pavers need to be replaced for, um, anything that you have to fund for that.
Through the, the chair, yes, that's correct. We're retaining nothing there to actually maintain a safety of the service. Um, with a bit of action at least, they're heading right at the moment. We've started to go around the track around the pressing of the individual areas here. Some improvements need to be made with, uh, substantially using the existing papers, mainly lifting them up, doing a preparation effort, putting the same paper back down here, but around keeping, keeping a safe operation at the moment. There is some areas that are doing some treatment. Um, previously we had had a programme where we did so much renewals in the gift and, but the concept of discussing a new paper, it was not doing that to me, so it was about doing that on a progressive basis through the, through the length. That could work out in that first instance, we need to think about it again, so we've actually gone back to say, the memo that we were around saying, we're going to hold up, we're going to this area as a much bigger prep check and we'll maintain and we'll approve what's here at the moment in a short, short term, we're checking.
Yeah, Councilor Seag. Well, it's not really a question as such, but, um, a lot may come from the practice question. I, I don't want really to know the whys and the whens of why that maintenance wasn't done, but you will know, you will be aware, I want you, of my view that the cleanliness levels and maintenance and peer levels of the pavers in the central city, I think has been woefully, um, ignored for the last little while. And I think there are lots of areas where, um, rudimentary maintenance would both improve the health and safety issues in terms of the safety of the pavers and also improve the cosmetic look of the paving, which I think, um, we, with leading the way, is, I think we seriously do, do ourselves a serious disservice to cities, so I'm delighted to see this paving as a chairman. I don't imagine that the way funding is, that it's going to be a large amount of capital expenditure for whatever paving replacement might be decided on as the most aesthetically desirable or performance desirable. So I think it's really essential if we want to promote Deane as a city that looks attractive and is attractive to live in and visit, especially for all these tourist customers we see, that we do the work that may well be possible because of this fund sitting there. And I would hope that this fund is not going to be constrained or the availability of the, this care is not going to be constrained just to be used for, um, health and safety maintenance, because I think there are lots of areas where broken pavers, damaged pavers and filthy pavers can easily be at harm's using the resources that might be available. Would that be possible? That was the question.
That is the current program in the intro basis is to use the resources to maintain a literally new service within the existing, um, um, with the, within existing facilities.
Thank you, and I just, could I add, um, I was concerned when I walked around the octagon, uh, last Monday or this week, uh, just before meeting with some of you to discuss this issue, uh, to see the, uh, number of weeds growing up around the paving, around the building and curb edges and in particular in the low octagon top of Stewart Street, some of the newer area of paving below Stewart Street, the filthy condition of a lot of the pavements. Can I assume that some of this funding will go to raising the maintenance and cleanliness levels of the paving?
The, uh, the, the, the funding for that budget, we have connected as a capital renewal budget, so it wouldn't normally be used for operations, um, as in cleaning and maintenance and operation, whether that's a satisfactory or achievable, um, a big enough budget, that's a sec, separate consideration that needs to be worked through. Um, but there is an extra program to go of inspections with yourself and others both before and after this recent meeting with you and an action plan to be put in place for more. We'll see what it'll hatch up in the end.
I can see that operationally turning a paving over and exposing a clean side might be the solution to that problem.
That is quite possible. Um, it's certainly an option, we've had, we've been looking at it before and in some parts it has been done. Um, not always the underside of the pavements are in a suitable position, a suitable condition to turn over that type of journey.
Thank you. What can I say to my response there is, there is a separate line I'm going to flush out of this port, cleaning versus removal that they include as well, and we've been discussing recently around cleanliness and having inspection around the octagon area. There was even that, uh, performance in terms of cleanliness was below what we were expecting and so the contract has resolved that for the moment. And, uh, that cleanliness, we're looking at other options at the moment around the paving and improve how those, uh, pavers, the top services, the, the, remove, remove food, right, and so there's a small part going on at the moment, and that feedback will be important.
Thank you, well, and just, please, um, improve the result and we'll look forward to seeing it. Thank you.
Councilor Hawkins.
As, as part of that construction tender in late two thousand and thirteen, uh, can you talk about what if any, uh, design or aesthetic parameters were set up as part of that tendering process?
Well, that process, um, did, uh, did resolve, really revolve around changing the pavers to a, um, paving war in line with lots being put on in Southend, so it's a larger paving, um, it's different pattern for laying, um, obviously a different colour. Um, but the pavers style themselves are, are of different depths, um, so it involves a number of, um, issues about how it's constructed. The contract that we worked on and exposed for some fluid dealing with, uh, trying to hit target to replace the water mains around these pavers, so we were doing it once and not able to do it again and rather what we've had the water main program through to, I think, yes, to our extent, so the equivalent acceleration that we actually made again. Um, that is its own issues, it's fantastic for the tendering process about, uh, trying to maintain a suitable business level around the, the businesses operating there and how it can be done, um, to keep shops going, digging moving, buses going, cars, um, and a number of issues that came up to the point where, um, we needed to step back and actually look at the end.
And that did match your question, I think, so.
May, you know, can I, just to clarify, so those, um, people competing for that tender, what was their expectation of, uh, or what was their understanding of council's expectation of design and aesthetics in that tendering process?
As, as I understand it, you're wrong, right? It was, uh, replace existing bricks with bigger paving stones, the same that we used in Southend and redo the water mains underneath. No chance of a side that is lying around. Replace, basically replace the bricks with a different paving, same conditions. And certainly in terms of the memo, um, in like this, around the central city paving, um, part of that process we've worked through is what is the design for that central city area? Is it replacing the existing bricks with pavers and existing few lines or is it something else? And that's what will come up as part of that process.
Just a question, I'll just, on the specifics of that comment. Um, this decision to replace the existing pavers with something different and a different colour, that was made by whom?
Um, it's basically an operational decision. It was a decision made in terms of the Southend Eden area, um, same as the page that was used in the trial in the low octagon, is that right? Pretty similar? Yeah, it was a new design, sort of, operational decision was made.
Is it something that was made by, let me know.
No.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, working down through the...
Do we note the report, Your Worship, or do you want a motion that we note the report?
Uh, well, it does, it's a recommendation to you, you'll note on your decision sheet, um, that there's, at the end of each section, there are three recommendations that we move and, um, pass for each one.
None of them contain to the report. Do you want a motion that we note this?
In other words, you're suggesting we note it, I'd quite, quite have to take a motion in that regard. So you'll move it?
Yeah, I'm having a vote.
And second, thanks, that we...
That we note it on central city paving, probably?
Any discussion on that? My quote was, if they would, please say aye. Against? Okay. So following on from there, there's, um, page three point seven of transportation planning, parking enforcement is three point one three.
Three point, we should like...
Two more questions.
Yeah, um, the increase of the work on what's called the, is it a new access? What is that? I'm looking at three point one, the capital expenditure, um, under the overview, that refers to a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase for the NZTA.
That's associated with the current notice requirement process, council's going through over the intersection as they head and provision, um, for assuming that the notice comes through for an excess for all this requirement.
And, and the next line down which refers to the work with the street cycleway, um, there is an assumption in that line that this process is being completed, there's, that it is assumed that this, it'll be finished this financial year, is that right?
Better see to your questions, Mr. Spoh, if you're here, um, it's pending on the completion of the property negotiations from the board side.
And the, um, the work on the canation tunnel which is referred to there, is that because that funding is being transferred, um, to the project control room?
That's great, yes. Although, um, the way we came to it, money wasn't transferred because of a whole range of financial reasons, but it's settled inside the trust and making it so.
Yeah, okay.
Because it's not only used up by any financial year, I'm going to be careful, it's not skip.
And the safety and safety work, um, is that it underway?
There's another one.
But that refers to the two hundred and forty five thousand dollar decrease, completion of safety and safety work.
At the time of, um, that two hundred and twenty five, that was actually the expenditure that was mentioned with, um, the cement and, um, steelworks.
Yes.
So that work has been totally held, at that stage it was a one year project.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, it was painted over, but it's, um, now it's on, so that's why it's increased because the, the budget was...
Yeah. Okay, that's one, yeah, I just wanted to know whether or not it would be because again, I read that it had been completed as well, I don't think it has been done.
And it's still obviously, yeah, she had the, um, report from the consultants on that what, uh, if it was in the same case, you would see, obviously there would be a report there and that may have other implications. There are parts in the thing.
Counselor Linn.
Your Worship, earlier today we had talked through the year regards to this concerns, we had a hundred K, uh, increase in budget for Rickenham Road, I was wondering whether Tony was able to give us on the, uh, the work that started being, uh, trying to achieve regards to securing the sliver of land that's required to achieve that, the minimalistic sort of approach we've taken to Rickenham Road. And the other part of the question was, um, progress on there from the hundred K decrease, is this still adequate funding here with a hundred and fifty to see for fourteen fifteen to carry out whatever property proof that is required?
Shall I get, um, Mike coming on the budget because she's probably a bit concerned there. Um, in terms of the, did you ask a question around the land ownership discussions?
Just where that's at.
Yeah, the, uh, at the recent, um, this briefing, you, you, Mike was there and Kate, she'd been busy, had a briefing from, um, you know, around progress on the discussions. Did we do that? Okay, so another recent meeting here, I think, yeah. Um, uh, there's been quite good negotiations with landowners on the length, most of the length of Rickenham Road, about acquiring strips of land, um, due, as I understand, close to, you know, potentially signing up people. Um, the majority of people, as I understand, are reasonably happy and those negotiations have proceeded. And I said there is budget allocated for doing the deal and the time that we need to, so.
So the hundred thousand decrease means anyone funding to complete the task?
The hundred thousand, hundred thousand, uh, decrease, rich ends of the project budget for them is probably a three hundred and fifty thousand, it was two hundred and fifteen, three hundred thousand, um, it was, there was a hundred thousand between the three, it was two hundred and, two hundred and five, one here, two hundred and five here, um, I'm not sure they look, um, paying sort of decrease rates in, in paying cash flow of the works that we're going to do, it's not a question of variable budget or what's happening.
Counselor Hawkins.
The ongoing shortfall between revenue received from the entire regional council for bus group maintenance and shelters and actual spend on bus group maintenance and shelters, is that a reflection of different expectations of the two councils or a recent decrease in funding? I mean, forgive my lack of context throughout this discussion, but...
The, um, the budgets provided around what are essentially in fact that they don't get us through because we do a delegation work on, um, basically a role, so they come and they say, we want to build this in these places and we go ahead and do it, um, and what we're seeing, they pay us back. Um, and in this case, they obviously haven't moved to, uh, having a programme, maybe the last couple months, or new, uh, infrastructure facilities, so we've got expenditure, goes up and down with the team, I'll pop your own pain, uh, we've got no real control over there.
You're, you're suggesting that they will never, I mean, to me it reads that they are never going to provide as much revenue as we are seeing anything on that activity?
No, that's, um, the revenue we get from them is always actually a distinction.
In summary, it's in and and out, so whatever we see... In summary, it's an in and out, so whatever we, whatever they want us to spend, we spend and they, we embrace it.
Mike, that was a very good explanation with regards to the $100,000, and it's a shame that you were not able to give that this morning to Mr. Fetter when he is here. Is it possible just to shoot him up an email, just give him that explanation? Because otherwise they will be discussing at the community board without that knowledge, because obviously they didn't have, you know, they had a misunderstanding with regards to the $100,000 where it was coming, where it's coming from.
On the, through the chair, Mike.
Sure, I'd appreciate it.
Right, parking enforcement, 3.13.
Really, I noticed that there is various significant changes to...
Change of the gas.
Oh, and change of the gas. I'm just looking down the post, and I'm just a little bit disturbed at the extent of some of those changes. So there are some that are quite extreme, like more than 200% increase, some close to 300% increase. I noticed there's some that have gone down. So what I'm assuming is, there has been work go on which has identified the true costs, and this is a correction for that. The only concern I have is whether in making the size of changes that we are proposing with some of these, that we will then get quite significant reaction from those people who use those particular park services or buy those as a one-hit chain. The parking enforcement around six meter length, twelve meter length, eighty meter length, all the way down there has gone up 26% in one place. So that's on page 3.18. On the previous page, relocation of a payer display machines gone from $400 to $900. Display of goods annually, gone from $33 to $92. They're quite, they're quite big. So do they now truly reflect the actual cost, or are we seeking some renewal increase?
Through the chair, no, we're not seeking any revenue in. What we did a detailed analysis of what we've been charging, and as you really touched on, we're realigning the fees for it because lots of revenue meters we've discovered per unit. So when somebody has a permit, they're not getting income from those meters, and it's a detailed assessment on what they're reviewing as.
The previous page?
Yeah, so any other, any other costs to repeat what the, like relocation of a meter that we touched on it? So this to repeat really what it does cost to move it?
So if you go to display of goods annually, which has gone up like 278%, is that where someone requests the use of a footpath or a parking space or something, to put something on display? And why would we have gotten so terribly wrong that we need to go up by that extent when we originally set the charge? Because it's been stable for two years. So it's display of goods, some commercial use of footpaths, display of goods annually, a shift of $33 a year to $92 a year. I would have thought footpath cost would have been nine, and we shouldn't have got that far off.
So that is the actual cost that it's costing us. Most of that charge has been used up in enforcement, and we're talking about the second-hand shop. So when we originally got the display, it was really looking at flat shop, we had a small display outside. What we now watch is basically a second-hand shop, and they're having a mess of the inner of the support path. So it's terrific what they're actually using.
Particularly reflecting these.
Yeah.
All right.
Particularly everyone's self need.
So can I follow up on that and ask if it's charged for florists 99 or the 33 they used to pay for the footpath they had? Or the Zedman they had to pay 99 because second-hand shops take up more room?
Through the chair, this is correct, yeah, it's basically consistent right across. Rather than start running down to the detail of the type of business they were running with, it would be this cost, and because you're something else, the state cost, it was really drawn to be consistent across.
Right, last one, the question's connected.
Just a follow-up on that, would it not be, also be consistent to retain a $33 charge across the board? Because it's not quite costing us any more to administer, I would assume?
The enforcement charge, so it's to now that it's more... Gives you, it's passing, it's not passing the cost of enforcing regulations now that they're using more and again to find different types of fuels.
But is it costing us more to enforce a shop if it has two meters square of pavement as opposed to one meter square of pavement?
Through the chairs, it's really the number of places displaying goods, and that involves the parking offices, ensuring there's compliance, because a lot of the time there's not compliance. So it's, it's really the, there is a lot more goods being displayed out there, which is tying up more time of our parking offices to enforce it.
So is it actually being tied to the fact that we are seeing an increasing amount of staff time spent, rather than the fact that there is an increasing amount of pavement being used?
Yes, the question about the, could we continue to charge the florist who uses a small amount of very tight display? That might be since someone, it's similar to a discussion about dog control and good dog owners who keep their dogs under control and end up paying for the enforcement for all dog owners. Simple, you could think about it as a trading policy, we've been out, we've needed up the meter origin, but really by the time we get to the next half-time, I suspect it would end up being considerably more than $90 a year.
I guess the final follow-up issue, Bishop, is, is it conceivable that at the conclusion of the review of the commercial use of footpaths policy, there may be changes to this?
Through the chairs. There will be a full review of the department, of the review of the fees.
Is it conceivable that that will occur before the same plans are adopted?
We're looking at doing in the next couple of months. With the work we're doing with the mobile traders, I'm looking at overarching by what, if I can see that actually happens, because it will be that will form part of that activity.
Thank you.
So just to follow up on that, in that review, would you be considering different ways? For instance, if the more people or the more shops that want to display on the pavement increases the workload so that the price keeps going up, might we not also, might we not turn the whole thing around and say, England is allowed to put something out, but it can be no better than this, and if it's any better than that, we find the habit. And then we don't have to even have a cost. I'm just, well, I'm just using that as an example, but pointing out, are we looking at it as a comprehensive review for its principles, or are we just looking at how we do it now and where we adjust it?
It would be a comprehensive review, because it's changed, like in UCL Deneen, as an example, second-hand shop, and if you look at it's on the corner, and it's, it's right front, it's got a period of footprint, and it's the bottom lawn, Hillside Road, and then round into Prince Albert. That's really good, yeah. So the, the such, all the game out there has changed drastically. We, that would be, if a group would look at that, that'd have to be a comprehensive review.
Council Hawkins. If you wish it.
Parking enforcement and permits, I'm sort of interested to know why we've got down on price there.
What are we talking about here, sir?
We're looking at Octagon and George Street for one day, six days.
What page is it?
Oh, present.
Through the chair, I was seeing out of it before, we have looked at what is the most revenue from the meters next, but we don't have a thorough analysis on it, making sure that there's, there's a line with what we're losing. But also, we also want compliance too, so we don't want to see it to go away rate. Where it has happened, where people won't get permits, don't apply for permits, we just go ahead and do the work, because that creates a lot of enforcement work, actually us to follow up by, they haven't got a permit to, we'll check that out, then to go and talk to them about it. So it's really trying to strike a balance between the revenue we're losing from meters of that activity and not setting at such a high rate that people won't be fine.
Kevin, just going back to the hiring of the footpaths in the second-hand store, in your review, are you looking at charging for a square meter inch or, you know, a shopper? It might be meter one way and ten another, that sort of, is that the sort of thing that you're looking at?
Through the chair, that is one of the considerations, but what, I think we need to go back to basics in that, even ask the question, do you want anything to stay on the footpath? And then so what is the width out from the shop that you can do it in, how long, along the frontage of the shop?
Yeah, so there could be, so the shop owners will have a clear idea of what they're going to pay depending on how much of the footpath they want to use. So it won't be as we've got at the moment, just a flat rate of $90 for everybody, or what you're proposing. So it will be a scale depending on how much of the payment they use.
Yes, they, they, they would come out and want to do the comprehensive review, they will get, I couldn't all put the same category in there, they could end up out there, but they would come out with a review of what the charge for...
Yeah, I just happen to think it's very important that people pay for what they're using. And so if someone's got a small piece, those may, they pay less than somebody who's got maybe, I don't know, a 20-meter shop run. Any further questions? So, so the page 3.23.
Just a query on the revenue. Why is it that we're getting an increase of revenue from parking buildings and by the decrease in revenue from now, straight path paths, in the rates as far as I perceive it, we're charging more fully for either of them?
It's through the chair, it's usage, we've gone back and looked at actuals. So we have three part parts, October part, August, August burnout station, but the budget says quite a high set, so that's why that has been realigned.
So it's basically just reflecting actuals?
Yes.
Any further questions on that section? Right, I'm here with the chair, the three metric recommendations that, the template for which is on your decision sheet, 6A1. And in this instance, it's the, the tenement service related to rolling of footpaths and operational addressants related to footpaths. Only do all those three, so you can, council stands, any discussion on that? Put all those away the press AI on.
Aye.
Yes, cap.